Buenas tardes, buenos días. Bienvenidos al edificio del Congreso de Guam. Gracias a todos por estar aquí hoy. La fecha de hoy es el 7 de julio de 2025. La audiencia pública de esta tarde se lleva a cabo por el Comité de Finanzas y operaciones del gobierno, y se ha llamado a ordenar en este momento, justo en el tiempo, las 2 p.m. Algunas cuestiones de housekeeping que voy a discutir brevemente para que podamos ir a trabajar. El primer notificación de esta audiencia pública fue diseminada a todos los senadores y medios de comunicación el 30 de junio de 2025, con la segunda notificación disminuida el 3 de julio de 2025. Las notificaciones de audiencia también fueron disponibles en los medios locales, el sitio web de la legislatura de Guam, nuestro calendario legislativo y el gobierno de Guam's public notice portal. Hoy continuaremos la audiencia pública para el proyecto número 11-38 COR introducido por el senador Sean Guitaalto. Es un acto para amender el 26202A, 26202C, 26202D, 26202E, 26202F, 26202G, 26202H, 26202I y 26202J. Todo artículo 2, capítulo 26, título 11, "Guam con adentro relativo a la entrega del relaje financiero a las familias y negocios de Guam frente a los costos de vida más altos al restaurar el impuesto privilegiado empresarial a un 4%". Quiero notar que este proyecto originalmente se escuchó el lunes 9 de junio de 2025 con los miembros de la comunidad pidiendo una audiencia de seguimiento, y es por eso que estamos aquí hoy. En este momento, me gustaría bienvenir a mis colegas que están conmigo esta tarde. Por supuesto, tenemos al autor del proyecto, el senador Sean Guitaalto. Tenemos al senador Jesse Lujan con nosotros hoy, el vicepresidente de este comité y nuestro vicepresidente, el vicepresidente Tony Ada, el senador Shelley Calvo y el senador Joseph Augustine hasta ahora. Estoy seguro que vendrá más cuando vaya pasando el tiempo. Antes de empezar, me gustaría recordar a todos los participantes de las reglas generales de la legislatura de Guam. Los testigos primero serán reconocidos por el presidente antes de hablar y dirán su nombre completo para el registro. Cuestiones y testimonios serán confinados a la sustancia o naturaleza de la agenda de hoy. La inferencia personal respecto al carácter o motivo de cualquier senador o individuo testigo no es permitida. A continuación, según la sección 11.07 de las reglas de la legislatura de la 38ª legislatura de Guam, un presidente puede ordenar la desaparición de una audiencia de un comité o subcomité de cualquier persona que no sea miembro de la legislatura de Guam, que fracasa en observar el decorum adecuado. Cualquier violación de esta regla general resultará en la desaparición inmediata de esta sala de audiencia pública. Está bien, ahora escucharé el testimonio sobre el proyecto 11-38, pero porque estamos comenzando una segunda audiencia, voy a seguir y permitir al autor una vez más algunas declaraciones de abertura, y luego voy a ir al panel.
Está bien, gracias, señor presidente, y buenos días a todos los que están aquí y también a aquellos que nos están viendo en nuestro canal de la legislatura de Guam y en YouTube de Guam también. Primero, gracias, presidente Duñez, por programar la continuación de la audiencia pública de hoy sobre el proyecto 11-38 COR y por la oportunidad de reintroducir brevemente la medida para el beneficio de aquellos que no pueden seguir la audiencia pública inicial, como mencionaste, que se llevó a cabo el 9 de junio de 2025, casi un mes atrás. Señor presidente, entre los comentarios ofrecidos durante esa audiencia pública de 9 de junio de 2025 sobre el proyecto 11-38 se incluyó lo que creo que fue un argumento muy poderoso de la ex senadora Simon Sanchez. En pocas palabras, resumió que el proyecto 11 es en realidad bastante simple, porque en lugar de gastar más dinero en los contribuyentes, el proyecto 11 busca devolver un estimado 80 a 85 millones de dólares a los contribuyentes para que puedan decidir cómo gastar lo mejor que pueden con su dinero para empezar. Señor presidente, aunque hay discusiones en este ramo en Atalube, en el oficina del gobernador y en nuestra isla sobre bajar el PPT para las industrias adicionales y aumentar el nivel de ingresos del PPT para ciertos pequeños negocios, el proyecto 11 es sencillo. Baja los impuestos para todas las de Guam. El proyecto 11 ayuda a bajar el costo de hacer negocios en Guam, lo que significa, como dijo la ex presidenta de la Asociación de Contratistas de Guam el mes pasado, los mismos negocios son más probable de hacer otras cosas con el reembolso del PPT del 1%, tales como aumentar los salarios y los salarios de sus empleados, contratar empleados adicionales, reinventar sus negocios, tales como renovaciones, limpias, llevar adicional stock en la inventoria, invertir en más entrenamiento para sus empleados, mejoras tecnológicas, expansión y abrir nuevos lugares. Señor presidente, en lugar de expandir el gobierno, el proyecto 11 fortalece el apoyo del gobierno a los negocios y a las miles de empleados y familias en nuestra isla que forman nuestro sector privado. Solo en los últimos años fiscales, los responsables de decisiones priorizaron más dólares en los contribuyentes hacia la expansión del gobierno en forma de ajustes salariales y aumentos sustanciales en la parte de retención del gobierno y en las tasas de contribución médica. En plan simple, nuestras familias están pagando mucho más hoy por los servicios gubernamentales, pero ¿están estos servicios siendo entregados a un nivel que esperamos? Señor presidente, los contribuyentes están poniendo mucho más para dirigir el único hospital público de Guam mientras la organización sigue sin acreditación, sus instalaciones están constantemente en mal estado y los proveedores de salud están buscando suministros. Estamos en el cuidado de enfermos en lugar del negocio de la salud. Señor presidente, nuestro sistema escolar público requiere más de 200 millones de dólares solo en ingresos generales para operar cada año, mientras los estudiantes, maestros y personal continúan preocupándose si su escuela será ordenada por la salud pública a cerrar debido a problemas de salud y seguridad de instalaciones perennales, gracias en gran parte a la política hecha en este ramo. Señor presidente, en un momento en que las agencias continúan pidiendo más, tales como la GFD, que está solicitando 5.6 millones de dólares para FY26 en comparación con su apropiación autorizada hace apenas dos años, ¿está esta legislatura proporcionando a nuestros bomberos los recursos que necesitan para proteger la vida y la propiedad? Creo que sabemos la respuesta a esa pregunta. Señor presidente, todo lo que tenemos que hacer es reproducir el video de YouTube de esta audiencia pública del lunes pasado sobre el proyecto 82, la madre que compartió su historia de perder a su hijo de tres años. Señor presidente, fue a través de esta coraje de esta joven madre y compartiendo su historia lo que destacó problemas serios relacionados con GMHA, donde la falta de ambulancias de GFD me afectó como nada más en mi corto tiempo en esta legislatura de Guam. Señor presidente, el problema de la falta de ambulancias de GFD no es nada nuevo. Mostamente no surgió en los últimos seis meses o incluso en dos años. Señor presidente, ¿necesitamos suficientes ambulancias de GFD porque no teníamos suficientes fondos para comprar nuevas en el pasado? No creo que sí. Claramente, este gobierno tenía el dinero, en realidad más que suficiente dinero, al menos durante los últimos años fiscales, mucho dinero que aprobamos aumentos de salarios de empleados en todo el país, sin embargo, este gobierno olvidó equipar a los empleados con los instrumentos, las ambulancias, los coches de vigilancia de la policía, camas hospitalarias y goma. Puedo continuar y continuar, lo que nuestros empleados necesitan para entregar los servicios críticos que nuestros gente paga y espera. Señor presidente, han sido casi seis meses desde que entré en el servicio público como miembro de la legislatura de Guam, y en cada oportunidad que he tenido con los concejales, jefes de agencias, empleados del gobierno y con ustedes, mis colegas de la legislatura de Guam, enfoco cada vez que todo no debe siempre ser sobre el dinero, debe ser sobre prioridades, específicamente es sobre poner adelante buena política pública. Señor presidente, el proyecto 11 restaura el 4% del PPT. Prioriza el emprendimiento al apoyar a las mismas personas que han sacrificado tanto por creer y invertir en Guam. Señor presidente, el proyecto 11 restaura el PPT de 5% a 4% y, sobre todo, ofrece a esta 38ª legislatura de Guam una oportunidad para ayudar a este ramo a recuperar el confianza y la confianza de nuestros gente. Así es, Monsi, señor presidente, y espero la audiencia de hoy.
Disculpe, señor senador Guitaalto, y me gustaría reconocer algunos colegas adicionales que nos han acompañado, el senador Sabrina Salas Montanani, así como el senador Chris Barnett y el senador Therese Tullahi. Como mencioné antes, el oficina de Finanzas y presupuesto dará un impacto revenue, pero antes de eso, como estaban en camino, invité a dos personas del sector privado a comenzar el testimonio. Después de eso, haré que OFB venga y presente, y luego continuaremos con el testimonio público. Así que ahora me gustaría reconocer a una persona que es muy reconocible en nuestra comunidad, Chris Felix, por favor procede con su testimonio, introduce a usted mismo y procede con su testimonio.
Gracias, senador. Mi nombre es Christopher Felix. Soy el dueño de una empresa llamada Century 21 Realty Management. He estado en la ciudad durante 52 años ahora en Guam, y realmente me gustaría agradecer al senador Sean por traer este proyecto. No es fácil traerlo, necesita mucha coraje, y por usted, senador Duñez, gracias por dejarlo salir como presidente. Realmente lo aprecio. Es hora de que esto sea de una manera o de otra, vamos a sacarlo, lo abramos y lo hagamos y vamos a dejar a usted, el Senado, decidir la forma en que debería ser hecho. Tengo como cinco comentarios, creo que le di copias a todos. Oí que siempre se pregunta si disminuyes el PPT, ¿disminuiré mis facturas y servicios? Me gustaría decir sí, pero ¿qué tal si digo sí tan pronto como pagué yo los cuatro años que perdí tanto dinero? Sabes, estamos escorpiando aquí y he tenido que poner dinero en mi empresa durante tres años ahora para mantenerlo funcionando porque es una buena empresa y tengo 26 personas que tengo que pagar y algunas de ellas han trabajado para mí durante 40 años, 40 años. ¿Cómo puedo decirles adiós? Sabes, no lo voy a hacer, no importa lo que necesite, voy a seguir adelante. Así que, ya sabes, mi verdadera respuesta a si disminuiré mis facturas es, no aumenté mis facturas cuando pasaste de 4 a 5%. No lo hice, y porque me dijeron y la ley decía que era un aumento parcial, así que tomé un respiro, mantuve un respiro como todos los demás en esta sala, la mayoría de la gente en esta sala, esperando que se derrumbe. Desafortunadamente, no lo hizo y el cinco siguió y siguió y siguió. De nuevo, cuando el proyecto original aumentó los facturas, se declaró temporal y tenía un expiración. ¿Puede esta legislatura ayudarnos al estar por detrás de ese compromiso? Es hora, creo que es hora de levantarse y volver al pasado. Usted nos hizo un acuerdo y nos mantenemos por nuestro lado. Espero que el gobierno se mantenga por sus. Los tiempos son difíciles, muchos de nosotros realmente solo estamos manteniendo la existencia. Escuchas mucho hablar de empresas cerrando, cosas cerradas, y es verdad, y estoy seguro de que saben que es verdad. Es difícil sobrevivir en este negocio con nuestro turismo en baja, 60%. Todos estamos esperando que las cosas vuelvan. El ejército se construyó, pero no tanto, ya sabes, todo está en base y no obtuvimos nuestra, no creo que obtuvimos nuestra parte justa del impuesto privilegiado empresarial de las empresas que están haciendo el trabajo aquí, y me encantaría explicarlo a cualquier senador en el futuro. Sabes, escucho que el 5% es necesario para que el gobierno sobreviva. Escuchas eso y dicen que absolutamente necesitamos el 5, no podemos sobrevivir sin él. Bueno, ¿qué han hecho? Sabes, cuando no puedo sobrevivir, tengo que cortar, tengo que cancelar algunos de mis viajes, tengo que reducir mis salarios, tengo que freír mis salarios, tengo que hacer cosas para mantener las cosas en mi empresa. No he oído nada del gobierno sobre, gato, si vamos a 4, vamos a tener que cortar, vamos a tener que freír nuestros salarios, no contratación, cosas así, quiero decir, nada. No he oído nada saliendo de esa naturaleza, y simplemente no parece correcto que el gobierno simplemente esté diciendo, bueno, lo necesitamos del negocio, necesitamos ese 1%, tenemos que tenerlo, sabes, o vamos a perder 30 millones o lo que sea. Un buen senador, uno de mis senadores favoritos, me dijo la semana pasada que el gobierno necesita aprender a vivir dentro de sus propios medios. He oído eso varias veces, pero fue genial escucharlo la semana pasada cuando estábamos hablando de este proyecto y durante años, ya sabes, ha habido un superpaso de ingresos. ¿Cuánto de ese superpaso de ingresos ha sido dejado para los tiempos malos, para los tiempos difíciles? ¿Cuánto de ese superpaso ha disminuido nuestro déficit? ¿O hemos simplemente tomado eso y lo ha explotado de nuevo y pensando que mañana es mañana? Cada año el gobierno dice que necesitamos el 5%, pero cada año hemos tenido un superpaso. Ahora dicen que las nuevas leyes de impuestos van a, tienen que mantener el 5% para sobrevivir debido a las nuevas leyes de impuestos. ¿Por qué no probar el 4%? Ustedes saben, y, ya sabes, el año próximo, si absolutamente lo necesitan, vamos, ya sabes, vuelvan y hablemos con nosotros, pero dale una chance, pruebe el 4% y ve cómo están sobreviviendo y qué debe hacerse. Lo siento, eso es buen viejo Chris Felix sacando de su pie de nuevo. Gracias.
Gracias, señor Chris Felix, aprecio su testimonio. Señor Monte McDonald, ¿se puede proceder?
Tienes que amar a Chris Felix, Dios, estamos en el mismo comité en la Asociación de Realistas de Guam, soy el presidente del Comité de Affairs del Gobierno. Esta es la persona a la que me acerco y busco guía cada vez que tenemos una reunión. Gracias, Chris, por esa postura, siento que estoy rompiendo la cabeza. Creo que dije suficiente en la radio, pero leeré el testimonio que tenemos de la Asociación de Realistas de Guam, y están bastante alineados con las otras entidades de negocios, la Cámara de Comercio, la Asociación de Hotel y Resto, los contratistas. Estamos bastante, todos somos bastante de la misma mentalidad. Respetablemente, transmito este testimonio con fuerte apoyo al proyecto 11-38, que busca restaurar el impuesto privilegiado empresarial de Guam de 5% a 4%. Ha llegado el momento de honrar la intención original del incremento del PPT promulgado bajo la ley pública 34-87, formalmente el proyecto 245-34, y devolver este impuesto esencial a su tasa adecuada. Background: el PPT fue aumentado como una medida temporal. En 2018, el proyecto 245-34 fue aprobado por la legislatura de Guam y firmado en la ley como ley pública 34-87, aumentando el PPT de 4% a 5%. El aumento fue explícitamente descrito como una medida de emergencia temporal, impulsada en gran medida por los miedos de las cuestas federales del programa de Medicaid de Guam y para estabilizar las operaciones del gobierno de Guam ante la incertidumbre. Fue una decisión difícil pero necesaria en el entonces, hecha bajo la premisa de que se destinaría una vez que la estabilidad fiscal volviera, y sin embargo, años han pasado, el aumento temporal se convirtió en una carga permanente. Ningún clause de destazo fue implementado, ningún ley consecuente ha roto el impuesto de vuelta, y a pesar de repetidas llamadas del sector privado, propietarios de pequeños negocios y la comunidad más amplia, el 5% del PPT sigue en marcha. Impacto del PPT en el sector público de Guam y las familias trabajadoras. El 5% del PPT afectó desproporcionalmente a los pequeños y medianos negocios locales que formaron el núcleo de la economía de Guam. A diferencia de un impuesto basado en el beneficio, el PPT es elevado en los billetes de comida, lo que significa que impone un negocio, ya sea rentable o no. El margen más pequeño se volvió menor. Para aquellos que operan en el borde, el aumento en el impuesto fue, ha significado descuentos, subidas de precio, planes de expansión suspendidos y en algunos casos trágicos cierres. Esta carga inevitablemente se desplaza hacia el consumidor. El aumento del 1% del PPT resulta en precios más altos en cada bien y servicio, desde comidas y gas hasta la vivienda y la salud. La gente de Guam ya está atravesando con la inflación y altos costos de utilidad han soportado el peso de un impuesto que nunca se había planeado ser permanente. El gobierno de Guam debe vivir dentro de sus propios medios. La incapacidad o desacuerdo del gobierno de Guam de volver a un 4% del PPT refleja un mayor problema y una mayor problema, y la sobreconfianza en el impuesto al sector privado para compensar los desequilibrios presupuestarios. En lugar de agrupar el gobierno y mejorar las eficiencias, continuamos a extraer más de los mismos negocios que generan empleos y impulsan la actividad económica. El gobierno debe ser impulsado a examinar el gasto, programar líneas de flujo, modernizar la compra y eliminar la duplicación. La responsabilidad fiscal empieza en la parte superior y nuestros líderes deben enviar un mensaje claro de que no operaremos más como si el sector privado fuera una fuente sinfínica de ingresos. La reducción del PPT estimará la economía y crecerá los ingresos. Reducir el PPT de 5% a 4% no es solo una cuestión de justicia, es una estrategia sound y económica. Menores impuestos incentivan las inversiones de negocios, expansión, contratación y innovación. permiten la estabilidad de precios y el crecimiento de los salarios. Un sector privado más robusto lleva a la mayor compliance de impuestos, mayores billetes de comida y, finalmente, mejores recogimientos de ingresos, incluso a un menor ritmo. Restaurando el PPT a 4%, esta legislatura tiene la oportunidad de tomar un paso boldo pro-crecimiento que fortalece nuestra economía, construye confianza con la comunidad empresarial y mantiene el dinero circulando localmente. Final apoyo, mantén la promesa. No olvidemos que esto nunca se suponía ser el cuadro de estado. La gente de Guam nos dijo que el aumento del 5% fue temporal. Fallo seguir con esa promesa erosiona el confianza pública en el gobierno. El proyecto 11-38 no es solo buena política, es el cumplimiento de un compromiso demasiado largo. strongly encourage your support of bill 11-38. Vamos a poner la economía de Guam en el camino correcto. Aumentemos el peso en nuestra comunidad empresarial. Vamos a devolver el PPT a 4% y permitamos al sector privado y a nuestra gente respirar de nuevo, presentado por Luisa Kabuhat, presidente de la Asociación de Realistas de Guam y yo mismo como presidente de Affairs del Gobierno. Muchas gracias por la oportunidad de hablar y un especial agradecimiento al senador Sean Guitaalto. Amo sus declaraciones de abertura, fueron tan precisas y, nuevamente, lo que Chris tuvo que decir, Dios te bendiga, Chris, te amo.
Disculpe, señor McDonald, y entonces en este momento voy a preguntar si alguno de nuestros senadores tiene alguna pregunta para estos dos, vicepresidente.
No, señor presidente, solo espero que lleguen los restos de los testimonios.
Está bien.
Y de esa manera podemos seguir y tenerlos todos a la vez.
Gracias. Senador Guitaalto.
Sí, gracias, señor presidente, y es una pregunta que he hecho de los paneles anteriores, pero voy a empezar con Chris. Ahora, ya has mencionado lo que vas a hacer con el reembolso del PPT, pero en tus discusiones con tus amigos en el sector privado fuera de la GAR, ¿cuáles son algunas de las cosas que están planeando hacer con el reembolso del PPT a sus negocios?
Para ser honesto, prácticamente lo mismo que yo. Vamos a pagar, vamos a tomar nuestros pérdidas, vamos a resolver eso, y luego si tenemos, y luego con cualquier profit, me encantaría hablar de bajar. Estoy muy abierto. Me encantaría bajar los precios siempre que pueda hacer un poco de profit y pagar a mis gente, eso es todo lo que quiero.
Está bien, gracias, Chris, y luego mi segunda pregunta es, sé que tienes empleados de GOV Guam y lo demás que también son algunos de sus clientes, ¿cuál ha sido su input de regreso a usted sobre este particular problema del reembolso del PPT?
Los que he hablado privadamente, parecen en favor del reembolso, sorprendentemente. Ellos, nuevamente, se reduce a que es justo lo que es. Quiero decir, cortamos el acuerdo, ustedes lo necesitaban, estábamos ahí para ustedes y nos mantuvimos en un respiro, ya sabes, ahora es hora de repagar, al menos volver a bajar hasta donde podemos sobrevivir. Es un momento duro en el negocio privado en este momento. Así que la mayoría de la gente con la que hablo, empleados del gobierno, parecen en favor de esto.
Está bien, gracias, Chris, y los mismos tipos de preguntas a Monte. Monte, sé que fuera de Luisa y usted mismo, cuando piensa en aquellas personas con las que trabaja, algunos de sus socios, algunos de sus proveedores, ¿qué dicen si hay un reembolso de este PPT por la política? ¿Qué van a hacer con eso, con esos procedimientos?
Oh, lo que todos vamos a hacer es hacer algo de este reembolso necesitado de largo en nuestras empresas. Algunos vehículos, estoy conduciendo en mi fleet, lo siento por decir que son algo abominables, lo siento, tengo que deshacerlos y mantenerlos en el camino, pero no hay dinero allí para revitalizar los vehículos, no hay dinero allí para mantener a los empleados, no puedo mantener al gobierno de los que los están quitando. Si se ofrecen un trabajo por el gobierno, no hay un aviso de dos semanas, hay aproximadamente un aviso de dos minutos, ya están. Si vas a tomar de mí para darle a usted, ¿por qué no querría estar en el grupo de usted? No es un buen momento, así que, gato, he estado, he estado queriendo pagar a mis trabajadores trabajadores duraderos, nada me irrita más que escuchar a mi contrapartidario del gobierno decir, pero le dimos un aumento de salarios a nuestro personal en Atalube, a nuestros trabajadores duraderos. Dios mío, pueden ser los trabajadores más duraderos del mundo, pero también son míos, y no puedo hacerlo porque el trozo es solo un cierto tamaño, y cuando más se le toma por otras entidades, y he estado en el negocio desde que retiré de la marina en 1990, así que 35 años, y en los últimos años, no puedo darles más, no puedo entusiasmarlos más, ya sabes, tengo que hacerlos pagar por parte de su seguro de salud, solían pagar el 100% de su seguro de salud, esto es algo que tienes, lo agarras, es, son tiempos tristes, pero esta legislatura es la que creo que lo hará. Has sido uno de los mayores socios con el sector privado, y veo que estás escuchándonos, nos están dando tiempo, nos están dando una segunda audiencia. Creo que hay luz al final del túnel, hemos estado con usted desde 2018. Para el aumento temporal de siete años es bastante largo temporal, ya sabes, me recuerda al viejo dicho, no hay nada más permanente que un salón temporal. Dice que ese salón temporal va a estar hasta que un typhoon lo tome.
Lo tengo, Monte, y una última pregunta es, igual que le pregunté, Chris, sé que trabaja con muchos de los de GOV Guam, ¿cuál ha sido su input cuando hablan con ellos sobre el reembolso del PPT? ¿Cuál ha sido el empleado de GOV Guam o burocrata, cuál ha sido su, su take a usted respecto a esta política en particular?
Esa es una pregunta muy interesante porque, como algunos de ustedes pueden saber, he estado casado con una joven señora durante 53 años y ellos preguntan desde el día en que salí de la marina hasta ahora, ¿por qué has ido al sector privado? Porque todos, el 100% de ellos están en el federal o el gobierno de Guam, ahí es donde se supone que debes estar. Vas a aventurar en el sector privado, es un mundo peligroso, hay muchos mineros de tierra allí, que la gente en la política puede tejerte. Y no ha sido, no ha sido agradable. He trabajado muchos años para el Departamento de Educación, terminé pagando con una reducción de impuestos. Tuve que hacer una lista, este mes, y así me pagaron, diciendo, debo de este recibo que lo sacaré de lo que te debo, porque no podemos pagarte. Bueno, ¿por qué firmaste un contrato conmigo si no puedes pagarme? Ya sabes, y esto es, ya sabes, nunca lo he visto con el gobierno federal, y amo trabajar con el gobierno federal. Tienen su libro de reglas y juegan con él. Y GOV Guam tiene nuestro libro de reglas y sabemos lo que es y ellos no.
Está bien, gracias, Monte, gracias, señor presidente.
Disculpe, señor Guitaalto, senador Jesse Lujan.
Gracias, señor presidente. Señor presidente, solo quiero ecocar lo que el señor Felix había mencionado antes, básicamente, en cuanto a agradecerle por sacar este proyecto para que se escuche, porque yo tenía un proyecto similar en la 37ª legislatura de Guam que nunca vio la luz hoy. Y así quiero agradecer al presidente y también al comité, el líder en las reglas para poder sacar este proyecto, porque si hubiera lidiado con él entonces, no estaríamos aquí hoy. Pero muchas gracias y espero los testimonios. Gracias.
Disculpe, señor Lujan, senador Shelley Calvo.
Buenos días a todos, y buenas. Voy a guardar mis declaraciones para más tarde, pero me gustaría agradecer al señor Chris y al señor Monte por ser parte del panel, y espero escuchar más testimonios. Y gracias por este proyecto, señor autor. Gracias, señor presidente.
Disculpe, señor Calvo, senador Joseph Augustine.
Gracias, señor presidente, me gustaría agradecer al panel, el señor Felix y Monte. Y ya sabes, realmente no tengo ningún...
And you know, I, I really don't have any reservations or not voting in support of this bill. I, I'm just hoping that we understand and that the OFB and the government comes down and sits down and makes it very clear what they need to do, so that the playing feels the same. What happens downtown, happens outside, and that's the way we should be doing business. We shouldn't be robbing Peter to defeat Paul. We should be just having, having a fair game and open up the system, and, and then we'll move from there. We'll figure it out. The government of Guam will figure it out, one way or the other. Can't be that hard. You guys have to figure it out, we can do the same. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Sidoos Massey, Senator Snagstein. Senator Sabrina Salas-Montanani.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I think it was quite obvious where I stood on this bill in the last public hearing held a couple of weeks ago. But Mr. Felix, you had mentioned something that you hadn't heard a lot about in terms of like senators that have come out and said, or talked about, cutting. So I would just like to hear from you, even from you, Monti, on areas you think where we can cut in the government.
Well, all I can say is I'm not the government, but again, in the past, the years I've been here, they have talked about freezing salaries, they have talked about no hiring except essential, and really essential hiring. Those, travel, you know, the, those are, those are the simple cuts that I think we could start with and look from there. We don't need a Doge here, I think, you know, we can just kind of look around and we all know what's happening, and we've all been through it. So that's where I would start, would be things like that.
Years ago, there was a, a committee, and that was comprised of all, pretty much all the departments of the government of Guam, and they're, they were trying to figure out a way to cut the cost of government. What can we do to cut the cost of government? And they were looking for the private sector, and, you know, all the, all the Chamber of Commerce looked at each other, "I'm not going on that committee." And I said, "Yeah, I want, I want to go, I want to go." I went, so I went on the committee, I said, "Okay, so let's figure out how many people we need to lay off. What's the goal? What's the goal here?" They just looked at me, you know, they could just like, the steers, the spears were coming, you know, that, I said the, the wrong, the word, you know, personnel and cutting. Don't say that to government of Guam. I said, "But 90% of the money in the government goes to personnel, and 10% goes to everything else, so we're going to sit around here in this committee, and we're going to figure out how we can cut that 10%. That's what we're going to do. We can't downsize. Man, when I lose a contract in my company, if I can't absorb it in other work centers, they have to go out, I don't have any money. There is no, no money there to pay them." And so I, I took it upon myself to have an ad hoc committee at the Chamber of Commerce in the early 2000s, like 2003, 2004, and I had Senator Klitsky, Senator Forbes, and Senator Kastner-Bauer on that committee in conjunction with the, and we went to every department in the government of Guam. And our goal was to get them to outsource the non-core competencies, which was pretty much most of the competencies within these departments. What is, what is highly governmental, what has to be governmental? People say fire, police, whatever. In some jurisdictions, that's not even governmental, but, you know, there was a lot there, and we couldn't, we didn't get anybody, even those three prestigious senators couldn't influence a department. But we did pass that law that, that we've got the Service Contract Act from the federal government implemented in the government of Guam, so at least there was some parity in pay and benefits. So I, I feel pretty, pretty good that Senator Forbes, Klitsky, and I put that together, but it just can't seem to let loose of employees in the government, no matter what. And we've all done it where we've come from Tumon up past GMH, and on the side of the building where they allow smoking, no matter what time of day it is, unless work's over, you know, there's a whole bunch of people out there doing whatever. And we all know Guam Memorial Hospital runs leaner and meaner and more efficient on non-work hours than it does during work hours. So I think it is, you could just see it all over. There is, and, and what would happen to these people if they didn't work for the government of Guam? Well, I can't get employees. Come, come through my door, I got jobs, I'll hire you. The fear of the private sector sets in. It's, it's tough.
Thank you, Monti. You know, a lot of, I've taken a lot of criticism and a lot of heat for some of the statements I've made here in the public hearing room and in, on session floor in terms of cut, 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 but I truly believe that. I think the climate we are in right now, we should look in, at our government and look at ways to cut, cut, cut. So I thank you so much for coming and testifying. I'm sure other people will be testifying in support of this rollback. Again, I do support this rollback. I don't believe that the people of Guam elected for status quo, they elected for, elected change. So that's what I plan to do, is bring change. Thank you.
Sidoos Massey, Senator Sabrina Salas-Montanani. Senator Burnett.
Sidoos Massey, Mr. Chair, for the opportunity to speak. I just want to thank the panel for their testimony. There's been a lot of good points raised by the supporters of this measure, and I think it's a tough decision we have as a body, because as, as you know, Mr. Chair, we've been having the budget hearings, and I've been keeping track. I think just about every single agency coming in here with a status quo budget request is also saying that they're going to need a supplemental appropriation just to make ends meet. So I think we have a tough decision, especially as we still analyze the impacts to the island on the, of the one beautiful big bill act. And so I'm just eager to hear the testimony here today, Mr. Chair. Sidoos Massey.
Sidoos Massey, Senator Burnett. Senator Chalai.
Thank you very much. No questions at this time, but thank you for your testimony. Sidoos Massey.
Sidoos Massey, Senator Chalai. Well, gentlemen, that was easy. So as promised, we'll release you at this point, and we'll get Office of Finance and Budget to come forward. So I want to make a couple of comments. This was at the request of many senators while we were in the first hearing, but we're not going to do a question and answer with Office of Finance and Budget. What I'm going to do is have them come forward and make a presentation on the revenue impact to fiscal year 2025 and fiscal year 2026. The detailed impacts have been prepared by the Office of Finance and Budget. All of the chairmans of committees should have already received that email, and we will subsequently have meetings if they need further guidance to discuss those impacts on those cuts, so that the committees can get to work. But I'm not going to have that demonstration here, but at the request of senators, I will have Office of Finance and Budget put forward the revenue impacts. And after that, I will release them, and we'll go right back to anyone who's come to testify to hear every voice. Like I said, we'll be here until 10:00. So Steve Guerrero, please come forward. If you have any other assistants to join you, Steve. So Steve, I understand that you have a PowerPoint presentation?
Yes, Chairman, I am going to do a PowerPoint presentation, and basically what the presentation is just going to divulge is rolling back the BBT by 1% and its impact it's going to have on the government of Guam, and that's all the presentation is going to be, okay? And if you'd like me to start, I can start.
Yes. AV, are you ready? Just make sure AV tells us they're ready. And they'll tell us they're ready, I guess, when their PowerPoint hits the, oh, there we go. Okay. Steve, the floor is yours. Introduce yourself and proceed.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Again, thank you all senators for allowing me to come and testify on behalf of Bill Number 11. Again, just making it perfectly clear, my presentation is, is just purely having the impact of reducing the BBT by 1% government-wide. It doesn't take into consideration, it doesn't take into account the economy, the private business, or anything like that, it's just strictly the impact it's going to have on the government of Guam. And I'd just like to start out by saying, a couple of, a couple of, I think the immediate impact that you're going to realize if it does go through is that based on the FY25 Business Privilege Tax adopted for FY25 of 390,986,473, 1% of that is 78,197,299, which equates to about 1% of the BBT. FY25 BBT-adopted revenues account for 43% of the total general fund revenues. Reduce the amount of the general fund revenues available for appropriation for the government of Guam operations, you'll definitely have a, kind of like a rolling impact government-wide from top down. The immediate implementation of the 1% reduction will have an across-the-board adverse impact on all government agencies. BBT revenues specifically fund annual appropriations to Guam Memorial Hospital, which result in the reduction of millions of dollars if you're taking FY25 appropriation of approximately 4.8 million that the hospital will not receive. Reduction in the BBT would result in a decrease in the 2% rainy day fund, which is required by law, which is approximately 1.5 million.
Hey, Steve, just for a moment, are there supposed to be rolling slides?
No, not, not on that. This is just my own.
Thank you, thank you.
Yeah, just to say. And then lastly, the proposed 1% reduction, if applied across government of Guam departments and agencies and programs, will highly result in the reduction of funding for both personnel, services, and operation. We can go now into the slide. What the slide details here is basically the creation of when the 1% was actually implemented, which was back in FY23. Again, the 4% BBT was raised to 6%, and the reason why they did that overnight is because the government of Guam was losing revenues and wasn't collecting revenues at the point where it sustained its operation. The passage of this in, in the public law basically was temporary, and there was a sunset provision that once we got to a certain level, the sunset provision will take in place, and it would revert back to 4%. In Public Law 2776, which was signed into law on February 28th on 2023, amended the BBT from 4 to 6% effectively April 1st, 2023, and was supposed to revert back to 4% on March 34, 31st on February 20, on February, on March 31st, '24. Again, it also had a sunset provision. In Public Law 3487, which was signed into law March 16th of 2018, the BBT was set at 5%, and I remember distinctly the reason why it was done and it was passed, it was to make up for the difference that due to the Trump Act, this was supposed to cover at least the shortfall or any shortfalls realized in revenues as a result of the Trump Act. Again, the Trump Act was all supposed to be temporary in nature and was supposed to revert back once the, the law was passed. However, in Public Law 34116, which was the government of Guam annual budget, which for 2019, that law signing, the, the law signing to, law was put the BBT at 5%, and yet it has been at 5% ever since to today. Next slide, please. The numbers you're looking at here basically are numbers comparison using only the CER report. The CER report is Conference Revenue Expenditure Report that the government of Guam puts out every month, and it, and it totals every annual, every annual total revenues received by September 30th of each given fiscal year. I am using the CER report, that way you can compare apples to apples. I didn't want to use the CER report and then revert to the audit, because then we're talking about apples and oranges. But just to give you an idea of how the government collects this money and how it ends at the fiscal year, these are the numbers as shown. So and for fiscal year 2022, the total adopted revenues for, this is, again, this is only for the BBT, this is not for the total general fund, was 323,972,627. The actual collected was 209,466,240, for variance of 323, 333,326,387. Again, in FY22, no excess money was utilized at the end of the fiscal year or during the year. In FY23 for BBT, the adopted was 365,964,518. The actual collected was 323,792,627,000, 627,000, the variance of 42,171,891. Again, this is the balance of the BBT at the end of FY23. Yeah, portion of this money has since been used. Keep in mind, this is the CER, this is not the audit, okay? In FY24, total amount for BBT was 414,229,254. Actual collected was 365,964,518, for a variance of 48,264,736. Again, these are balances at the end of the year, which basically the government of Guam collected over the adopted revenues. Again, these balances, most of the balances as we speak today have been either appropriated or have been obligated, okay? Again, it's important to realize, the reason why I presented this way, because people wanted to see how much we were realizing at the end of the fiscal year, not taking into account what was appropriated out of these balances. Next slide, please. Again, going back to FY22, the actual balance of the BBT as of September 30th, 2022 was This is exactly the amount of money that was available at the end of the fiscal year. This money was not appropriated nor was touched. In Sep, in September 2023, there is a negative of 308,993. In other words, what happened is that although we surplus in FY23, we over-obligated by over-appropriating by 308,993. In September 2024, we surplus 500, 51,30,296. Again, this amount that you're showing, 51 million, this is the amount that was ending as of September 30th of that year. This amount, however, has been, already been obligated by appropriations made at the fiscal year. I believe the balance of this is roughly about 1.4 million. And in May of FY25, currently, for the, for the first eight months of the fiscal year, the government of Guam has realized about 90, I mean, 31 million dollars in excess of BBT revenues, okay? Again, this, this is, again, what is the balance of the CER report as of May of 2025. Next slide, please. This slide, next slide, please. This slide shows the BBT at 5%, and this is FY25. This is total revenues now we're talking about, which is 906,464,877. If we were to implement a 1% reduction in the BBT, the total general fund revenues would reduce by 71,889,748. That is the impact of 1% against the BBT. This is the total impact it's going to have against the total general fund, okay? Go to the next slide, please. I don't know if you can zoom in, at least on the first left-hand side of this, of this, of the screen. Can we do that? Yeah, we can start on the top. This is basically a spread This is basically a spreadsheet of the total revenues the government of Guam receives on an annual basis. The majority of the revenues that the government receives basically comes from its taxes, which equates to about 50, 56% of the total general fund revenues. If you look at the first column where it says BBT, uh, column D, uh, the highlighted kind of like orangey part there, it says income taxes. The majority of the taxes on income tax come with from withholding tax. Then it's shared almost equally between corporate and individual tax. If you add the sum of that, uh, roughly, and you, you take out the provision for tax, and by the way, you, if you see the 175 million up there, that is what the government of Guam sets aside every year for tax refunds, automatic. We do it. And that's the amount that we've been utilizing for the last three or four years. Then you see the couple of columns now after the, um, uh, gross provision for tax refunds, we have earned income tax credit and also child tax credit. These are, these are monies that we receive from the federal government that assist in paying off of tax refunds. And then the, um, if you look all the way going up on top before I forgot, I, I forgot to mention on the, under the total general revenues, the total general revenues collected is about 994 million. Of that 94, uh, 94 million, we take off about 41.1 million every year to offset the shortage that we, we will need to cover the tax refunds. So if you take the 44 million plus the 57 million for the earned income tax and the child tax credit of 71 million, you'll come up to about 175 million. This is the amount that we need to pay for tax refunds. Going down, uh, after total income, you'll come to be at the BBT, which is the business privilege tax. Total amount that we estimated projected for FY25 was 390, about 391 million. Of the 391 million, 6.19% is set aside automatically and that appropriation goes directly to the hospital. And that's by law. Then after the, uh, that provision is done, there's also tax credits that the government of Guam issues over the years that we also subtract from the total revenue base, but we need to account for it because it, it is potential revenues had those tax credits haven't been approved. So these were the monies that we should have gotten, uh, if those tax credits weren't issued. Uh, so if you look further down, so the total business privilege tax, once you subtract all those, um, um, tax credits and of course the pharmaceuticals, the total business privilege tax comes up to 375 million for the year. If you add all the taxes going up, which is the business privilege tax and all the with the taxes on tops, that comes up to about 930, I mean 839 million dollars. As I mentioned earlier, the three taxes, the three categories, which is individual, withholding, and corporate represents about 56% of the total general fund. The BBT represents about 43% of the total general fund. Going down the federal sources, federal sources here we have is, is federal income tax. This is what we call section 30. This is money that the federal, we receive from the federal government every year. This money vacillates, it fluctuates every year. It just depends on what the recording, um, that the federal government, uh, would, would calculate on how much Gov Guam is to receive. Then you go to the right-hand column. Can you switch to the other side of the slide? There you go. Then we have smaller areas that we, that we kind of like take into account. Use of money in property comes out to about 2.6. Leases from, um, fees and permits about 4.4. Then the total license, uh, for fees and services, then the, the better public service fund, again, that's by law. We, we, we take that off the business, the business licenses fund and that, that is appropriated for government operations, I believe for two other agencies. They're small amounts, but they're not in the millions at least. Departments who charge this is 1.4 million. The, the total general fund revenues, if you add all the revenue categories amounts to 924,964,160 dollars. Of this amount, again, by required by law, we need to set aside 2% of this amount and this goes into the government of Guam rainy day fund. That amount on the average, at least for the last couple of years, hovers about 18 million. In this case for FY25 is 18,499,2983 dollars. So in, in effect, once you subtract all the mandates by law and you take into account what the government of Guam is, is projected to generate within the fiscal year, in FY25, we anticipate to get 906,464,877 dollars. Now, the next column, aside from that, on the, on the, I think it's column E, that represents the reduction of the BBT, the 1% BBT. So if you go back to the original slide, I mean, the other side of the slide, uh, go up to, no, down further, go down, go down a little bit and to the, right there. So you, you see a total there of, of 390,000, I mean 390 million on the business privilege tax. If you were to take the 1% of the, of the 390 million, that's going to equate up to 87, I mean 78,197,299 dollars. So that would reduce the BBT from 390 million down to 312 million. That would be the impact of the 1%. That impact also, again, like I said earlier, would impact the appropriations made to the hospital because the appropriation made to the hospital is based on the total BBT collected for the year. So if you reduce the BBT by 1%, of course, the appropriations of the hospital will also have a corresponding reduction. That amount will equate up to 4.8 million. Right now, they would have been, they would have been, right now, based on the law, they are getting 24 million. But if this law, if the 1% would go into effect by the end of the fiscal year, the hospital would be, would only get 19.3 million at a difference of 4.8 million dollars. If you go further, if you go down again to the, to the next slide, I think it's on the next side. Okay, blow that one up. No, back, back to the other, okay, blow the right side up. Okay, right there. Okay, if you look down at what it says, total general fund revenues, this right on, on, on the, below it is the 2% general fund reserve. 2% of 924 million is 18.5 million. But if you're going to, if we're going to implement the 1%, that 18 million would, would drop down to 17 million, which was, would show a 1.5 million dollar reduction in the rainy day fund. So the total amount available for appropriation in FY25, should the 1% go into effect, would be reduced from 906 million to 834 million for a difference of 71.9 million dollars. And this, this is where I guess the big question lies, is that if it does go into effect, the challenge now is where do we get or where do we identify 72 million dollars in the government of Guam? The only thing I can say at this point, it would very, it would be very difficult to implement that this time in the fiscal year simply because we're already into the fiscal year nine months. And if we're going to go back and try to reduce 1% of FY25, we're talking about taking out 72 million, which we have already spent three quarters of the appropriation in the fiscal year. So you basically theoretically, you cannot take out 78 million dollars because we've already went through the year, three quarters of the year. So you know, that's going to be the challenge. But other than that, I mean, that's, that's basically, the impact for FY26, I'm going to defer from doing that simply because the FY26 figures are still fluid. We haven't decided on anything. We can use the executive budget numbers that they submitted, but I can tell you one thing right now, those numbers are not going to be the same numbers we're going to use in the final bill. So it's, I, I don't want to present it here. It's going to give kind of like a false pretense, but at least we're talking about real numbers in FY25. We know what the impact is if we do it today. If we don't do the, if we don't implement it today and we say we do it like over the course of three years, right? 33% of a percent. Maybe that's doable, that's manageable, but to do it all at one time, it's going to be a real challenge for the government. And I'll tell you one thing right now, government of Guam agencies and you know, I guess in the private business, it's kind of unheard of, but government of Guam agencies run anywhere from 50% to 90% of their budget is in personnel. If we are going to reduce government of Guam agencies to come up with the difference of the 78 million, I most, I will guarantee you that every department will be losing warm And I, I think, you know, to me, the challenge is right now is that to be more realistic if we're going to do this, to implement this in this fiscal year would be a really, really, really big challenge. If we're going to do it in FY26, I won't recommend that you do the 1% immediately because the impact is going to be too great, but I think more reasonable if you do it in increments over the next year, two years, I think it's more, and the impact won't be so bad. But again, you know, that's just my assumption or that's just my analysis of what's going to happen if we have to do this.
Cheers, Monty, Steve. And just to get you on the record, OFB has or will be immediately after this emailing all of the committees and the committee chairs, uh, the detailed impact, um, agency by agency, correct?
We have it all already.
Okay, thank you very much. So, and most of, we've been hearing, at least from our side, we've been holding true to the, to the, um, uh, basically status quo budget. So I'm just going to use the 78 million right now. I'm glad you didn't go to 26 because you're right, we haven't adopted that level, but we can use a ballpark at 78 million right now. Fair.
Um, just, just remember again, uh, Mr. Chairman, in the BD, in the executive budget, the governor is asking for 42 million over FY25.
Right.
If we are going to even attempt to do a status quo budget in FY25, we're going to be, there's going to be some real drastic cuts. And a lot of the, a lot of the appropriations made in that, in the 42 million is for the hospital, it's for the education, it's for public safety. And you know, there's ways we can go about finding and identifying funds within the agencies, there's ways, but not 78 million. I honestly think we can cut it down maybe about, honestly, 40 million and still have the government operate. But 78 million overnight, it'd be almost impossible, if not touching personnel.
Thank you, Steve. And as I said to the senators, I will, we will schedule and you've given me your commitment, uh, whatever time they need to come in and we'll schedule, uh, meetings with OFB. And like I said, the first thing is they'll get their information today and then they can go and start talking to their agencies. Thank you, Steve, and you're currently dismissed at this time.
No, concern.
Okay, so we will turn to the private sector folks or folks in general, non-government, I guess, or maybe there's some government folks here. And so Loisa, oh, I think that was already the realtors, so maybe Monty handled that. So let's get Teo up. Patty Diego said she's going to observe. Monty Mesa, please join us in the front. Uh, is Jonathan Savares, are you here? Are you going to testify or did you just sign up in support? Okay, you didn't check the box. So come on up, Jonathan. And then Bobby Shringi, are you testifying? Or just? Okay, no problem. So if Bobby comes back, we'll get him up. Jeffrey Bristol. Right there. So we still got seats, so I'll go to the second, um, panel here. Okay, we'll go with this panel first and I'll just start from how I called people forward. And so that would mean we start with Teo.
Yes, thank you, Chairman. My name is Teo. I represent the Chamber of Commerce as the chairman. Actually, um, that was a, that was a great presentation. I just wanted to kind of pinpoint a few things. First of all, that I wanted to mention is that the impacts that he's talking about were really looking at fiscal year 2026. Um, I don't think this is going to even impact 2025 fiscal year. So this is something that we need to kind of look forward to if there is ever an impact. Secondly, I wanted to also mention, I know there's, um, let's, let's talk about figures here, okay? So I wanted to, um, kind of reference a few articles that I actually looked up recently. And I think it's important to highlight this. So, uh, there was an article on the Guam Daily Post, March 21st, 2025. This is this year, okay? And the article's, uh, article's title is Gov Guam Revenue Surplus as of February 28th, 2025. And it says, Government Guam's General Fund Collection From Taxes And Fees Exceeded Projections By Approximately $37 Million. Don't forget, this is, this is in February of fiscal year 2025. Uh, moving on, there's another article and this is from Guam PDN, okay? Released just recently, June 10th, 2025. Gov Guam Tax Collections Exceed Expectations Fiscal Year 2025 Update. The government Guam has collected 52.1 million more in taxes and fees than expected during the first seven months of the fiscal 2025. Okay, so this is not even a whole year. Okay? And then, uh, beyond that, I know there's, uh, other articles that I, I'll, I'll go ahead and mention, uh, but I wanted to kind of highlight the point that I know there's a lot of concern out there. I know people think, oh, there's going to have to be cuts, cuts, cuts here and there. Honestly, in my opinion, considering where Gov Guam's revenue is, um, is projecting right now, I honestly don't really think there has to be a job cut. Okay? I think all the government employees can be retained. I think a lot of the, uh, the private sector can be satisfied and, and at the same time, we, I think it's about time we help out the private sector. Let's talk about tourism for a second, okay? And this is also because I know a lot of folks in tourism and they tell me a lot of things about what's been going on in the industry. I myself, I'm not in tourism, but, um, let's, let's talk about a lot of the complaints that they have, okay? First, number one, we're talking about the high prices, okay? And some of it is macroeconomics, right? It's not exactly things that we can control. It's stuff like, um, currency exchange right now, the yen is weak, the yuan is weak, right? But overall, people are coming here and they're having a very disappointing experience, right? Prices are high. One of the things that they mentioned, lack of personnel. Why? Hotels can't hire people. Okay? We're, we're having a shortage of, of employees. And why is it that we can't have, we can't hire, you know, service personnel? It's because the private sector cannot afford these people at the rate that Gov Guam is willing to pay. Every time there's a Gov Guam employee, it's, it's gone. They leave. They leave the private sector. Another complaint that they have is quality of service. Okay? Why is that? Okay? If you really think about it, I think the private sector is willing to improve their quality, it's just they don't have the funds to do it right now. They're struggling, okay? When hotels occupancy are at like 50%, 60% average, where do they get the funds to improve on their quality of service? Okay? Steve Guerrero's presentation was great. Thanks for the information, okay? That was very informative, okay? 71 million dollar impact, that's what I think he mentioned. I think the figure was 78 and then like with adjusted with all these other figures, you were talking about a 71 million dollar, um, budget, uh, impact, right? Let's talk about the Gov Guam budget for a second. When Gov Guam- When Gov Guam first approached the chamber eight years ago to ask for assistance when it came to the federal cuts that they were predicting was coming, okay? They were expecting a 60 million dollar impact. Gov Guam's budget during that time was close to about 800 million dollars, okay? Right now, fast forward to 2025 right now, Gov Guam's budget is 1.4 billion and they still kept the 5% GRT, okay? So while we're, we're, we're panicking here and some folks may, you know, stir that, that there is this issue of this huge government shortfall, the reality was that instead, government budget's been increasing. And the fact that it's been increasing is because they've been able to collect more and that's a fact, from 800 million to 1.4 billion, okay? So when we're talking about when the private sector is asking for the government's help right now, when, when, eight years ago, when the government came to us and said, we need help, I think we stepped up and it was supposed to be temporary. Now we're coming here, in here, we're asking for your help and we're saying, please, this is the time to help out the private sector. And I think it's about time Gov Guam, you know, keeps their promise with the private You know, there's, there's, you know, there's other things I also wanted to mention, right? We're talking about, you know, Gov Guam pay increases. We're also talking about all the shortfalls that are predicted in either GDOE or GMH, okay? But when the private sector is looking at the situation, let's look at it from the private sector's, you know, perspective. We've been paying 5% for many, many years. And now they're, now at this point, they're saying, oh, there's going to be a shortfall in GDOE, in GMH, but let's just look back six months ago, okay? GDOE is about to lose funding, okay? I'm not blaming anyone, but why is, why does the responsibility always fall on the private sector, okay? Why is it that when the private sector needs help, they're, they're saying, oh, GDOE is going to need all these funds, GMH is going to need all these funds? Because six months ago, I think I read that GDOE is losing funding because there are certain mandates that they didn't follow. On the other hand, you have GMH, which is also, they had certain requirements that they needed to meet. I, I believe they didn't meet those requirements and they're going to lose funding also in that aspect, okay? So why private sector at this point? Why is everything tied in, okay? When we need help right now? You know, there's a lot of talk about, well, if GRT is reduced from 5% to 4%, does that mean there's going to be savings that will be passed on to the consumers? I'm sure the market conditions are, are there, then yes, those, those savings will be passed on to the consumers. But I think more than anything, like some of the people, some of the companies that are paying 5%, you're not talking about companies that employ 300, 400, 500 people. You're talking about companies that employ 25 people, like my company, okay? You're talking about people like Kim, okay? And Kim and I have been talking a lot about this and we mentioned to each other, hey, if there's any savings, we want to pass it on to our employees. We want to give them a raise that they deserve, that they haven't been, they haven't seen in years, okay? So it, it really depends on every single company, every, different companies are going to use those savings to sometimes pass on the price decrease, sometimes pass it on to their employees, or even improve the quality of their product, which Guam sorely needs right now, right? And then also at the same time, let's also talk about price increase, price decrease, because if you look at it, major price increases doesn't normally come from the private sector, it actually comes from the public sector, okay? Not that, not that the port doesn't need it, but the port just recently announced a 17% tariff increase, right? Think about how that's going to affect prices, consumer prices, okay? While government fees are increasing, everyone's wondering why the private sector is not decreasing our prices, if, if 1% is given back to us, okay? I think those are things that we need to look at. And as I mentioned, I really don't think, I, I think you guys are all smart enough to figure out how not to cut employees, not, not to cut Gov Guam employees. As I mentioned, there's enough surplus out there. I believe the surpluses are enough to satisfy the 1% GRT that the private sector needs. And I think there is a way that a lot of the Gov Guam employees and their employment can be saved from this. And, and there's some good news also at the same time, okay? You have withholding that's going up with the military buildup. Once the military buildup is done, we're looking at all these permanent employees coming in and what are they going to do? They're going to pay into the coffers of Gov Guam, they're going to pay employment taxes, you know, they're going to pay section 30 funds, more section 30 funds. You were looking at more corporate taxes. So there's, there's some bright light at the end of the tunnel. Let's, let's think about it also this way. As I mentioned earlier, the private sector, I think, really stepped up eight years ago. We, we tried our best, okay? We, we tried to save Gov Guam. We tried to ensure that Gov Guam finances and budget were protected and the employees were safe. I think it's about time that, again, it's about time the public sector now needs to help the private sector. I don't know if you've seen, a lot of businesses have been closing, okay? Go out, go talk to the business folks, they'll tell you, it's really, really slow. And if the private sector is not saved right now, think about down the line. Who's going to pay the taxes five years, 10 years down the line when the military buildup is over? We need to help the private sector so that five years, 10 years down the line, the private sector is healthy enough to pay back to Gov Guam taxes. So thank you very much for listening to me. If you have any questions, please do let me know.
Sidoz Massey, Teo. Mr. Monte Mesa, you're recognized.
Good afternoon, Mr. Chairman and Senators. Thank you for allowing this time for us to give some testimony on the rollback bill 11. I just want to share with you again, it is stuff out there. As you know, I both, we run both Two Months Sands Plaza and Guam Premier Outlets. And yes, as the chamber has stated, I mean, we've helped this government through tough times as well. I appreciate Senator Joe San Agustin there with helping the businesses through the pandemic with the leap one. And subsequently, we did ask again and of course, a few more businesses got a helping hand. Although that was very helpful, it was still very challenging. We've lost a lot of tenants, we've, we've lost all our retail tenants at Two Months Sands Plaza. They were helped by that leap, but it didn't go far enough. At GPO, we're, we're still struggling, we're, we're, we have retailers that continue to believe that we can get over this, but it's taking a longer period of time. I have tenants here today that came with me. There were several others, but again, they're running their business, they can't leave their businesses to come down here and testify. They, we hear challenges that have been mentioned earlier about, you know, keeping staff. That is true. We, we, we saw a lot of employees that left off island to find, you know, better things in the mainland. Our population base is very small. We appreciate all the local people that have continued to patronize both GPO and, and Two Months Sands. It's, you know, it is helping us and, and we appreciate the business that we are getting now from our local customers that have been coming back. We are missing a lot from our visitor market. That is our greatest challenge at this time. We've developed our business model with both our local market as well as our visitor market. And unfortunately, at this time, we've never experienced this. This is, you know, again, another chapter that we've never encountered and it's dragging longer. We thought we would recover sooner. We've made projections with, you know, national retailers to come back, but since we weren't able to achieve those numbers that we thought we would get back, now time has passed, they put on hold all their investment that we had hoped to build back. We were, we were on a very nice growth, you know, through 2019 and then 2020 hit. We had all the optimistic expectation that we would recover as we've always been, but with this pandemic, it was very different. And it changed a lot of mindsets, not only from our local consumers, but even all the new investors that we were attracting to come to Guam. We had them all lined up, both for Two Months Sands as well as for GPO. We've held back, we, we've had empty spaces. I know that some of you have asked me to use some of our empty spaces for certain things, but yeah, we, we couldn't have it because then now, we also had the typhoon that hit us and that cost us a lot of capital improvements. Yes, we appreciate, you know, the, the leap that has been given to most of the retailers that were qualified. Not everybody was qualified for that, but we, we appreciate the, that leap one and the leap two. Here today, I'm here on behalf of all our GPO tenants who are continuing to conduct business, continuing to employ our local people in their respective businesses. We want to keep that going. We, we had to make adjustments as well, you know, to keep these businesses to continue to operate. We don't want to lose anymore. Unfortunately, you know, it's going to come a time, we have a few more that just can't make it. And you see that today with Dream Galaxy. I mean, that's a 15,000 square feet of space that now we've got to look for another tenant to fill up. And this is the reality today. This is why we're here to ask all of you and hopefully the governor will, you know, also support it when this bill passes and hopefully we get the balance of support from both sides. And this is, again, the legislature can always come back and, and, and put an increase if it, if it needs to. But at this point, and I'm, and I'm glad that Senator Gumatauto put this bill up. I know Senator Lohan before did it, but it didn't get the support and then I'm, I'm glad that this particular legislature is now seeing a value into it. We need that. At least the retailers today, both not just at GPO, but at Micronesia Mall, we have tenants that are both, or at three places, the Gania Shopping Center, Micronesia Mall and GPO. They're trying to continue to maintain and continue to run their businesses, but it's tough. And, and I'm sure other landlords too are adjusting to try to keep, nobody wants empty spaces. We, we want this economic activity to continue, but it's getting tougher. And this is where we're asking this government today to give us some help. And again, it's, it's for a period of time and it's at the wish of the legislature in the future, they can always bring it back. If those numbers that was just presented remains to be true. But as our chairman mentioned, I mean, we see the articles in the paper, but we see also what is happening with our federal government and, and Department of Defense spending here on Guam. We're seeing additional revenues coming and this is a time now that we see that, all right, our tourism industry has dropped. But we're lucky that we're seeing a federal spending continuing to rise and that's the balance. And that's where we need now this helping hand to keep our local businesses and some of our national tenants that, yes, they've, they've suffered a lot with the drop of our, our, our visitor numbers. And this is why I, I took this time and I appreciate you having this opportunity for everybody else to testify, but we're asking that, yes, the consideration to balance this out because this is a critical time for the last five years consistently. You know, we're growing back very slowly. It's never happened before, but that, this is where we, we really appreciate the, the legislature as well as the governor to pass this bill. Thank you.
Sidoz Massey, Monte Mesa. This time, we have Jonathan Savares. You're recognized.
How are they, Senator Chairman, Chairman Duñez? Thank you, Senator Gumatauto, for introducing this bill. I'll make it very clear, my name is Jonathan Savares. I don't own a business, but I understand that our businesses are hurting. And the reality is, when our businesses hurt, our community hurts because it doesn't provide anything else for our people to do. When the services are not there for people to interact in our community, then we're only creating more problems within our community. As somebody who grew up helping wherever I can, it hurts me to know that these businesses are struggling to renovate their properties, to, to pay for advertising, but yet the government, the government of Guam runs in a surplus. We have so many things that we're spending on that don't need to be spent on. The level of frivolous projects that we are, we are undertaking within the government of Guam when we cannot even take care of our hospital and our edu, and our education system, that's problem some. But now the people whose backs and backs have been breaking since the pandemic, suffering marwar and the constant degradation of their facilities, we wonder why? It's because the government of Guam keeps taking more and more taxes from these people who really need the, who really need a leg up to get back on their feet and get us back and ready for our visitor market. We cannot expect our visitor market to come back and we don't have the product that we have. We cannot expect the marine, the military buildup to happen and not have product in the south for people to go and visit. These businesses are the one, look at Coco's Island, what's going on? We cannot redevelop that. We lost it during the pandemic. Marwar took it further out. We need more things for our people, not just the tourist side, our people, our people who call Guam home. We neglect to remember that if, if it's good enough for our tourists, it should be good enough for our people. And yet, right now, the product is suffering because we cannot, we're putting all this tax burden and spending it on frivolous projects versus taking care of the priorities that really matter. And we wonder why, I've had businesses come and talk to me and say, John, why can't we fix the road? And I, and we put so much money into taxes, my friends cannot even shop here because their car is going to get messed up coming into, coming into my store. These are the concerns that are being set on the street, but yet we have projects that we're going to, we're going to push forward just because it's happy fill, happy-go-lucky? But when Beneventi Middle School, and I commend Senator, Senator Barnett, going out there to water blast the top of Maria Ujua? Because those are the actions of people standing up and doing something to actually move things forward and clean things up because the optics we have right now from our tourism industry, we have crime in Tu, in Tuamun. Our visitors are getting robbed, it's all, it happens all over the news. But yet, the, these businesses need that rebate so they can protect their facility, they can, they can make the investments, they can paint their facility. I was just listening to Ray Gibson this morning talking about the vandalism, the graffiti. If these guys don't even have money to, to water blast, what more money to keep paying for paint? I'm not a business person, but I see the struggle because the struggle is obvious across the island. And it's not just in the private sector, it's in the government sector because we're neglecting the things that matter and the things that are important. If we cannot do something to, if we cannot roll this BP, if we're not, if we don't roll this BPT, BPT back, how much of it is it really a privilege when these guys cannot even, the businesses cannot even get a permit? The permitting process stops them. Let's be real, they're paying more in taxes, but they're getting less in services from the government. That's the sad reality that we face. And that's why as a citizen, as a person who just looks at it from the outside, I'm here and I'm standing up despite all these other people saying, no, it's for big business. No, it's for people to stay alive, for people to take care of their employees. The private sector didn't get a 22% raise. They're lucky if they got a 3%. They're lucky if they got a 3% raise. They're lucky if they even got a raise to begin with. And the reality is, it's government sector versus private sector. There should be a level of cohesion in the middle. Thank you, senators, for hearing me out. I appreciate your time.
Sidoz Massey, Jonathan Savares. And so next up is Jeffrey Bristol. Please identify yourself for the record.
How far day, senators. My name is Jeff Bristol. I'm the owner of Goodie Sporting Goods and also the Nike store in GPO. And for myself, lowering the GRT from five to four percent is just really a matter of survival. I mean, our, our, our sales have gone, been continuously going down, yet our expenses are continuing to go up. Employees are really hard to find and to maintain them. We've, we've had to give three raises in the past two years just to make sure we have them on staff. And beyond that, also, I, I want to say, before I forget about Steve's presentation, it's a figure of 1%, but the reality is, a lot of the businesses like, like mine are teetering on the edge of survival. And what happens in a few years when we can't go anymore? And then you lose all the GRT, not just 1%. And of how many companies? And on top of that, all the staff, you know, so we're going to let go of thirty, thirty of our staff members if we, if we close. So that has a huge impact on the, on the community as well. And, and the overall loss of, of GRT could be way more than 1% if you just continue to let businesses struggle. Sorry, I'm a lot, I didn't come here prepared to really talk about anything. But just based on what we're going through, I think it would help us tremendously. Our biggest competition is the internet, online sales. Online sales, they don't charge the GRT. But for us to be competitive, we have to match online sales. We just, we don't have to, but that's our policy. So we have loyal customers. But that means we eat the GRT, we eat all the freight, all the other costs involved with getting products to Guam. So our profit margins are continuing to go down, our, our costs are continuing to go up. And pretty soon, we're not going to see a way out of this, except to close shop. So that 1% will really help us, you know, just survive. It may not seem like much, but it, it, it could help. And that's really all I have to say. I appreciate your time. Thank you.
Sidoz Massey, Jeffrey Bristol. Next on the list is William Nault.
How far day, senators, Mr. Chair, Vice Speaker, the rest of the honorable senators. My name is William Nault. My friends call me Bill. I am here today to, first of all, represent the Guam Travel and Tourism Association. And at the same time, I have also submitted my support. And before I go into the GTTA's support for the bill, I'd like to give you my personal input into all this. I have testified on other issues in the past years and so forth. And I always say that I have been in tourism for many, many, many years. To be honest, I don't really know if some of the senators are going to ask me later what we can, what we can do to create more money for the government, right? I don't know government, but I think I know tourism. Tourism today, as many people have testified, is not doing well. It is suffering. Many businesses are suffering. And to be honest, I believe that many businesses have suffered and they have closed. I know many businesses that are still open and trying to survive, as people have already said. But where they used to do, or where they used to hire hundreds of employees, today, no, they're in the tens. They used to hire 150 employees, now they only hire 65, right? Where they used to hire 50 people, they only hire 25. And they are all trying to survive today so that they can try to get back to the numbers as we did in 2018. But with many reasons, as he has mentioned, and I am not going to go in with the, the weakening of yen and all that, we have not reached that number yet. People have thrown out numbers like 60%. Maybe it is. Maybe it is lower. Maybe it's just a little higher in a couple of months, right? In several months, several months, it's lower. Average wise, we're hitting close to 60%. Is our revenue hitting close to 60%? Maybe we are, maybe we are not. But is our revenue, revenue hitting 60%? No, it's not. And the reason is because there are many factors where the cost of living or cost of things in Guam is so high. So what, what, you know, when we used to collect $100 for our gross sales and then our profitability was 40%, now when we collect $100, our profitability is 25%, right? We can raise the rate, we can raise the rates, you know, to, for the, for the things that we sell or what we provide, but then in, in, in general, we start to get lesser number of sales, right? And, and the reason is because things are getting more expensive for consumers to purchase. Just this morning, we had met with a marketing firm out of Japan. They came here, the, the person in charge is a young lady. She's very hyped. She wants to help Guam and, you know, with the, with her presentation and all the long things. And we had met just this morning, including Monty and other businesses that are trying to get Guam going in tourism. One thing that kind of stuck out to me was that she said, oh, you know, I want to help Guam. And because she goes, I was talking to my friends, who are probably in their twenties, and I was talking to them about Guam, and then my friend said, where's Guam? And she goes, I was surprised that my friends didn't know where Guam was. And then she kind of took out her phone, took out her Google Maps, showed them where Guam was and, and all this, and show all the activities and all the things that they can do in Guam. They say, wow, we didn't know. We thought it kind of took like eight, nine hours to get there, right? So they never thought about coming to Guam. Then another thing that surprised me, what she said this morning, what she said, I really, really want to help Guam. I really want to do something for Guam, right? And she goes, just a few weeks ago, I was talking to my mom, which is her speaking to her mom. And she said, Mom, why don't you go to Guam? And she goes, well, you know, I went there many times, you know, in the past. And, you know, now I hear there's nothing to do on Guam. And then the daughter said, no, no, look, I'm in charge of Guam. We have these things to do, this thing to do, this thing to do. And she goes, yeah, but you know, I, I think Guam used to have more things to do in the past. But, you know, my, you know, God forbid the COVID and all, all the things that have happened, we do have less things to do. And I can tell you straight out, we have less things to do. So tourism is not just struggling and hanging on. Some have, or many have already let go. So tourism is not the same as before. But, you know, I am pretty optimistic. If we can survive and we can get through this, we, meaning not just tourism, but the people of Guam, I think we can then grow into something much, much better, right? We can, we can, you know, we had, someone had pushed that reset button for us. We need to reset and we need to get tourism going. And we need to make it so that people are aware that we are here again and people want to come to Guam and then make Guam vibrant so that Guam becomes again one of the favorable places for people to come to. Now, with that saying, I'd like to go into my GTTA's letter. Thank you for the opportunity to present this testimony on this measure. We at the Guam Travel and Tourism Association fully agree with the legislative findings expressed in the measure, particularly relating to the economic difficulties experienced by tourism, other small businesses and residents on Guam in recent years. We welcome the bill number 1138's targeted broad reach and intention to bring business privilege tax relief to the island businesses. Enacted of bill number 11-38 presents a wide range of options for potential reinvestment of BPT tax savings, including the workforce new hires and retraining, customer service and other operating efficiencies upgrades and enhancements, as well as the host of needed capital improvements. At the federal level, we see involving funding cuts impacting both federal and local government operations concurrent with our challenging incremental progress in Guam's tourism recovery. The combination of these factors further compounds the fragility of tourism-supported small business operations and the complexities we embrace in our daily struggle for survival in Guam's marketplace. We thank you, Senator Sean Gumatauto, and we thank you every, the rest of the honorable senators for authoring these measures and stand ready to assist us as may be needed in support of the legislative enactment of the bill number 1138. Thank you.
Sidoz Massey, William Bill Nault. And so we'll go next now to Stephen Amagin. Stephen, you're recognized.
Test. Good afternoon, senators. My name is Stephen Amagin, a retired public servant, who has served our island and our people for 31 years and served our nation in three military branches of service, retired after 23 years of dedicated service. Before I start, if you guys have not done it yet, can we have a moment of silence for our brothers and sisters in Texas that died during the flood, please? Thank you. Continue to pray for them, please. I've been watching on YouTube all night about that. And for you, sir, I have a small YouTube channel and I always market Guam. I always try to convince expats in Philippines to come over here. But you know what they tell me? It's too expensive. So something that we have to do, okay? Not just government of Guam, but private businesses, probably we can meet halfway, lower down the prices. Thank you for this opportunity to speak in front of you all to express my, not really a position, but my thoughts to this bill. But assuming that majority of you all probably have already decided how to vote during this, during your caucus, or you guys call it now the markup, markup meeting behind the closed doors, I am still respectfully asking for full financial analysis before the burdens will be passed down again to our people, me, non-business owner, retired, and I had a fixed income, and also to my kids. Okay, because all these things have been happening, everything's been passed down to the little people, me. Before I continue, it is my heartfelt gratitude to the previous legislature, the 37 Guam Legislature, and our honorable governor, Governor Lordas A. Leon Guero, to have shared the federal funds. You might be laughing at that, but and short pluses for people via the, I don't know why should you enjoy this, the $1,200 GP rebate, right, or that we received from the short pluses. So it makes it sound like the government of Guam has not done anything to give back the short pluses, which they did. And I thank you all for thinking about the little people, okay? Suspension of the liquid fuel tax. Do you guys know about that? The liquid fuel tax will expire, I think, this year, right? But if lifted, and guess what? It will be passed down to all of you guys that touch the pump, right? I mean, the gas prices will go up. Childcare assistance that will expire. And only the families who are qualified under the income threshold will continue to receive the benefits. Okay, that helped my, my children to go to work. Okay, this allow young, young couples to work while their children are being taken care of by the daycare centers under this program, and they contribute to the BPT. If and when this program is halted and only the qualified families who can be part of it, this will force young people, young working family, either to quit work because, because probably the, the company is not helping them with their daycare, right? The big business is helping them with their daycare, or have their relatives, me, my grandparents, watch my grandchildren while they go to work. This will affect the income tax revenues and BPT collections or may even result in closures of the centers, the daycare centers. Because they're, they're taking advantage of all these grants from, the grants from the, the government. I am here to share my experience when the Trump Act was about to be implemented in 2017. A lot of you all are saying that. I spoke to a government employee. I served this island for 31 years. I was still serving as your public servant during that moment when Furlough or 32-hour work week were discussed with the implementation of the President Trump Tax Act due to projected shortfall at that time of about $60 million. It was heartbreaking to let my fellow brothers and sisters in blue of the possibility of Furloughs and 32-hour work week. You know what I told them? Last one in, first one out, right? And 32-hour work week for civilian employees. We have done that before. And I know how they work, I, I know how they are. They're, they're human beings. They also contribute to, to the income tax, the taxes that they, they, you know, they're also taxpayers. Such plan was never implemented through, men though, because the burden was placed on the taxpayers. That's all of us, by raising the business privilege tax, formerly known to all of you, okay, big businesses, as gross receipt tax. And I'm glad I'm not running for office because it's a lot of big businesses here, probably not going to support me. But you know, this is Stephen Amagin from Daredo. Prices were raised upon the implementation of the law that raised BPT from 4% to 5% the next day, right? Didn't care about me, didn't care about my children. They raised, they raised the prices. They were so fast to raise the prices. You know what? They pass it down to the little people, the little people, the voters of Guam, the taxpayers of Guam. Apparently, the law was passed. I saw that, there's some sensitive provision. But without any sensitive provision, I believe probably that was, you guys called that all the time, the bill, the writer of the bill, right? It's one of the slick way to slip in something that will pass a bill during a budget process. So it's not going to be a focal, focal, the focus of the attention during the budget process. It's a slick way. Rolling it back will not guarantee or rolling back of prices. Who can guarantee that you guys can roll back the prices? That our people will be able to benefit or afford, my children. The big beautiful bill. You all know that, right? You guys, you guys friends, you guys are friends with me on Facebook. I posted that. Somebody posted something about how he read that 900 pages. Has just been passed and now a law. In 2017, we anticipated $60 million shortfall. And what history indeed to repair itself. And yes, folks, it is back. It is back. Wake up, people. The rolling back of BPT will have a projected shortfall. That's my Filipino estimation, right, $70 million plus $60 million or more if we do implement the Trump Tax Act. I'm basing the $60 million from the projected loss that we're going to have in 2017. So if we do that, $130 million that government of Guam has to, to find out how they're going to be able to, uh, come up with, right? That doesn't mean a million dollars you guys talking about. Increase of child tax credit from 1,600 to about 2,000 to 2,200 dollars. Less income tax collection, that's the second revenue collection that we have. Higher tax refunds. It took five people from this island to take the government of Guam all the way to the Supreme Court, US Supreme Court, so that they can pay the tax refund, not really on time, but a certain period. The same thing as my fellow police officers took GPD to court to allow them to pay overtime, not in a timely manner, but every two months. They're still waiting. They get paid every now and then. The non-taxable overtime payments, that's also part of the, the big beautiful bill. I'm not sure if I'm correct or not, but... I'm not sure if I'm correct or not, but the President Trump is not going to tax that, which will more than likely cause less income tax collection. Reality, ladies and gentlemen, we need to work together as a public and private sector. Don't think about yourself, think about the whole island, think how we're going to be able to improve this island, how we're going to be able to attract more tourists. Military is helping us out right now. I call that military tourism, and I thank Uncle Sam, because I did serve Uncle Sam for 23 years. The $108 million federal funds for GDOE was placed back. I think that was in the news, you all read that, right? With the condition, the government Guam, the government Guam has to use their own money and submit it for reimbursement, and not guaranteed 100% reimbursement, and will not go back to GDOE. Will be going back to what I've known as a government employee as the black hole, the black hole, the general fund. Correct me if I'm wrong, that's how FEMA does it, right? Something happens here, agency will spend their own money first, and then they submit their justification or their receipt for reimbursement, and then the federal government will make the announcement, okay Guam, we're only going to reimburse you 90%. I think there's only one time that Guam was reimbursed 100%. That's during my Uncle Carl's time. Would that, would that be considered another $108 million shortfall? I mean, if my math is correct, if my Filipino understanding of that thing is correct, then we have to forgot the money to help out GDOE. $108 million, ladies and gentlemen. Where we going to get that? Do we print our own money? I don't think so. Add it to the identified $130 million that I estimated based on what I read in the newspaper, and undetermined amount of the 20% BPT rebates to healthcare providers identified by the new law. You guys know about that, right? Public Law 3828-7, they call that the Guam Medicaid Access Enhancement Act. How much would that cost our government? Would that cost another shortfall? How about the ongoing capital improvement projects that we have now? Would that affect it? Would this also result in the following? Hamper the construction of Simon Sanchez High School, based on what I learned the last time when I sat here with an estimated amount of $60 million. The continue of the everlasting double sessions for our poor public school children. My daughter went through that, you know, because I can't afford public school. I'm only a regular man, I'm down at the bottom, okay? And ability to set aside, listen to this, $75 million annually identified in the legislative intent of 12 GCA Chapter 83, 36 Guam Legislature called that the 21st Century Healthcare Center of Excellence Act of 2022, now called the Medical Campus for the construction of so-called Medical Campus. And guess what's attached to that? A 40-year obligation of $75 million a year, right? 40 years. Based on that law, it can be extended. I won't be, I won't be here, I'll be dead by then. Okay, but I'm worried about my, as you guys always say, my children's children, right? Stop the completion of a Ganya swimming pool, now they have, they have a lot of mosquitoes. And back of the thought of four lows, right? Yes, they're government government employee, but they're people too. They have family to support, they pay income tax. Yes, the pay raises was given to them, but guess what, guys? The pay raises brought them up to a higher income level and means that they pay more taxes. It goes back into the economy, economic cycle, right? It's not money laundering, but it's economic cycle, okay? That's how we managed to help out our government of Guam. More money, more money that you guys pay for taxes, okay? More money that you have to pay back into the government. The 32-hour work week, I experienced that with my, with our civilian personnel, and it was hard. And I don't want to see our, I'm retired, but I don't want to see our working people go back to 32-hour work week. If we can just avoid it by stepping back, and I agree to Senator Christopher Duñez that, you know, a full analysis of what's the effect of this, the big beautiful bill to our island. Or the last thing is this is going to be a political suicide, roll back the pay raises, right? Political suicide. Secondly, is continued dust collection of the Public Safety Facilities Construction Act of 2000, qualified in 5 GCH Chapter 59 unfunded mandate. You guys look it up. Empty promise, which I will continue to lobby, to lobby, to build the construction of the headquarters for the Guam Police Department. That law is supposed to build offices for the Guam Police Department, right? If you guys read it, Department of Correction, Guam Customs and Guam Fire Department. Can you imagine if you build that now? It will save our government money, right? And probably by that time with the money that we save, we can start to think about rolling back the BPT after a full analysis of our financial status. Difficulty and with the $93 million debt payments that we have, the following and the continuing appropriation, I got this from the public, from the budget law, okay? Limited obligation bonds, bonds, business privileged tax bond series, 2012 of 300, I meant 340, $3 million some dollars to finance unpaid income tax refunds for 2011, health insurance premium, and guess what? This is coming from the general fund. Guam Department of Education Series 213A Certificates of Participation for Kudo High School. This is also coming from the general fund. Limited obligation bonds, business privileged tax series, 2015 Delta Refunding, 2000 Series, whatever, right? Final maturity date of fiscal year 2040. I hope I'm still alive then. That's all coming from general fund. Limited obligations, okay, 630 money. You guys mentioned about 630 money, right? More military personnel, the bigger buildup, more money comes back to government of Guam. Refunding of that, okay? It says financing working capital cost for GMH, including the refinancing of an outstanding loan from the Bank of Guam, coming from the general fund, right? I'm not sure it's just being deducted from the budget. Our people has gotten used to the raised prices, and businesses were surviving, and tourism was still flourishing until COVID-19 pandemic struck our island. Yes, it was our people that continued to suffer from added taxation. The burden stops at our taxpayers. It was passed down to us, our people. It was mentioned today about BPT, right? They mentioned about the GMH pharmaceuticals would be affected. That's based on this fiscal year budget, 21 million, TJ and Jim Nation of $250,000, Guam National Federation, Tennis Federation, $300,000, Guam National Football. This is kind of dear to my heart because my nephew will be leaving soon in July 11th for football camp in San Diego, and always a tennis football game. And other taxes, I'm not sure what that, other taxes of $6 million. The pandemic came with billions of federal funds that helped offset the financial shortfall of our government, and also may have caused the touted surpluses, right? It helped. You know why? Because 26% of our budget in accordance with the executive budget request for fiscal year 2026, it's about 26%. So that's a bigger money, right? Federal funds are being affected, so I don't know how we're going to offset that if we're not able to come up with that, with that amount. Federal funds are not affected, and we don't know how much will it cost our government that is much dependent on military buildup, which we all know is just temporary. Small businesses are qualified under the 500,000 thresholds of the Dave Santos Act will not, again, I say, will not benefit from this rollback because they're only paying, what, 3%? So they're not going to be affected by it, they're not going to gain from it. With over, you know, with over 40, 500,000 not income threshold, why can't the threshold be raised to $1 million if we really care about the businesses, the smaller people? I heard there was a bill that was introduced that will raise it to $2 million, but the governor of some reason, there was a talk about why don't we just make it $1 million? Why can't we start with that, see what we can do to help the small businesses? Most of the businesses that are closing here, ladies and gentlemen, are the small businesses, mom and pop store and all the small businesses at the mall, okay? If and when this bill passes, how much of the identified financial shortfalls will be passed down to our people, me, a guy with a fixed income? And one thing good though, one thing good that I can see in this, this will probably result in rightsizing our government, will surely, but you know, it will surely affect the services that they not provide. Guess who suffer? Our people due to more taxation, because you know, they always pass it down to us. More taxation to cover the shortfalls for bad for the little people. Maybe raising property tax, I was mentioning one of the survey that I saw. It's a big mistake. This will raise government debt ceiling. I'm not sure what's the debt ceiling for government of Guam now. And more opportunity to borrow money to keep our government afloat and to keep us all in debt, not just you, your children's children. To think, I hope we all concerned before voting for this bill, to conduct a full financial analysis is that our people would be, will not be burdened with more taxation, higher prices if it passes. I hope the governor will veto it right away. If you guys notice, right, you guys, I love, I love to cater to, I always go to the restaurants, and I love to eat, because you know, we're retired, so if it's going to cost me less to go to the restaurant instead of buying all these ingredients, we go to the restaurant. And one thing I noticed, there's some restaurants that charges 10% to 15% service charge. Why can't, if that's, it's been happening now, ladies and gentlemen, why don't you guys just pass a sales tax so that people that can itemize it will itemize it so that they can get a bigger refund probably? Go to some of these restaurants, you know, I love, one of my favorite, my favorite restaurant is Agustin because they don't charge, they don't have a service charge. We ate there all the time. You know, that's when I give them my tip. I used to work for private sector, I used to deliver pizza, I used to work as a security bouncer at Hyatt to support my family, so I don't know how it is to work in the private I watched the budget hearing. GFD is asking for a dollar raise for, is that the 911 services? Was that, is that indication that our, our public employees or public safety employees need more money to maintain their equipment? Probably so. Bills that I read, you know, watching YouTube, it says that funding, it says that when funds are available, that's an unfunded mandate, that's an empty promise, because guess what? It will not be available when this bill passes and overridden by this Guam Legislature. I was just down in Tamuning precinct this morning, after we worked out, my wife and I, my wife is here supporting me. For the first time, I noticed that there's a lot of patrol cars at Tamuning precinct, but I bet you some of those are down vehicles. We have not, the last time that they purchased a real patrol vehicle was in 2017, 2018, I was part of that, the vehicle committee, where we purchased about 16 to 17 patrol cars, two transport vans. You guys take a look at the precincts. Look at some of these cars that they, our officers drive. Some of this, some of them have no cages. That's not safe for my brothers and sisters in blue. The rail patrol car is those muscle cars that you guys see, because they have cages. Senators, I'm not going to throw this in, senators affiliated with businesses, are you going to vote for this bill? That's a question, having in my mind. Passing this bill will just guarantee the lowered apartment or home rentals so that our people can afford rentals. We're basing everything on overseas housing allowance. Our people, our young couples, our young family cannot afford, because everybody wants to take advantage of the military buildup. Everybody wants to take advantage of the overseas housing allowance for two, two, three-bedroom apartments, condo, $3,000 to $4,000. Man, that's a lot of money. I wish I could print my own money and pay for that kind of amount of rental for my kids. But you know, folks, if you guys look at the provision in the budget law, right? Any surplus or something to affect that you're supposed to pay other debts, right, that you guys have? And there's a provision that, I know there's the budget law 2025 that something was suspended. But if you take a look at it, the rainy day fund, right? It's supposed to be 2%. I'm not sure 2% of the projected budget or 2% of the total amount the government has collected. Why, why don't they tally it back up minus whatever they have, and whatever the difference that put in the rainy day fund? But something that says was suspended. But that itself, we, you guys are already projecting that this may be some surplus. So probably can put some amendment in that and put some, something else. But also on the rainy day fund, my last calculation was about $125 million that was deposited in that account. There's a threshold that can be suspended. I think about a certain percentage about the last three fiscal year budget. So if you can take a look at that and see if you can suspend one year, one budget year of putting 2%, that's average about $60 million that they put in the rainy day fund. You suspend that, give it, give it as, give it as a rebate or something, right? Governor Ada was the only governor that gave $1,000 to $2,000 rebate, first time when I got off from the military, I enjoyed it. So rainy day fund is something that probably you can take a look at. And a lot of people don't like this, but the limited gaming fund, that's from the gambling. Limited gaming fund, if you guys suck it up, legalize casino, limit, increase the limited gaming fund, more money is going to go to the government of Guam, and probably we can roll, roll back the BPT. We have gambling during Liberation Day, right? We have bingo, as a matter of fact, there's a case about bingo. That's gambling. They have, they have a place there somewhere in Tamuning, about, that's a big place that they have bingo. There's already gambling happening in this island, ladies and gentlemen, why don't you just legalize it? People are going to say, oh, it's going to, it's going to cause more crimes. Come on, have, have faith in our public safety personnel. That's the only way. We have to compete with Philippines, Philippines right now building a mini Macau in Manila. You have to compete with other places that has gambling. That will help tourism. And lastly, before I close, one of the things that I can think of, probably to help tourism, also to help, I'm not sure who's going to help, but a small amount probably that if you lower down the hotel occupancy tax that goes to the tourist attraction fund, and make that, put a news release saying that government of Guam has lowered the hotel occupancy tax, probably will attract more tourists to Guam. We, you know, we do staycation all the time and 11%. That's a lot of money added to the room that we stayed in. But you know, we support businesses, we always support local businesses, with the exception, I'll be honest with you, I'm a hypocrite, I'm a liar, because I'm a human being, I'm a sinner, I shop once in a while at Timo or Amazon. So again, thank you for this opportunity. I'm just asking for both sides, please, think about the positive and negative thing. I'm just asking for both sides, please, think about the positive and negative thing. Is it gonna affect us? Not just you guys, but is it gonna affect the working people? Is it gonna cause more people to be laid off? Is it gonna cause more burdens or to our people? Because if that happens, you know what, we're the one driving our people off island because we don't care about them. We just have to take a step back a little bit and don't think about next election. People will vote for you if you do the right thing. The people of Guam elected all of you guys to serve the people of Guam, no matter who they are. Just make sure that's for the best of our people, not just for the best of the selected few. Again, thank you. I'm sorry, I probably passed my 15 minute time, but thank you for this opportunity. And if you guys have any questions, feel free to ask me because everything, all I have here is from an open source.
Sis Massey, Stephen Emmergyn, we next go to Kim Anderson.
Thank you very much. I'm sorry, I didn't catch your name. Can I ask? Amagin? Mr. Amagin, I really think you should be running for office. Because you're thinking, you're thinking on so many levels that I think are really, really important. Good, good conversations. Anyway, senators, thank you very much for this opportunity. I would like to say, first of all, I don't want to, well, I couldn't match the Mr. Amagin's ideas. So I'd like to add just a few of my own, from my own experience. But I would like to say that I did submit testimony that was lengthy, so I won't read it. And I also fully support what Chris Felix and Monty McDowell presented, as well as our chairman, Tayo. I'd like to just bring up a couple of small things from my own personal experience because I'm a very small business on Guam. We've been in business for 25 years. And at one point, we had 40 employees. We're now under 25, mostly by attrition or loss to the government. Which is, is actually turned out to be okay. Because as our business has gone down, we, we would have struggled to pay the salaries. It is distressing to me to lose employees that I need now because we're down to the bare bones to the government of Guam because of pay. One of the things that I have committed is 100% of the refund of that 1% gross revenue tax return would go 100% to employees and compensation for our team. I think Monty McDowell stated that he had to cut the insurance benefits. Fortunately, we have not done that, but we have not been able to provide incremental increases like we would like to, like the government of Guam has, like the port is anticipating. And actually, when we spoke with Mr. Rory Rispicio, he did confirm that his agency did give annual incremental increases. And I believe the government of Guam has as well. It's been a real struggle for the private sector to be able to do that. I note a couple of things. Mr. Guerrero, that was the first time I had seen a lot of that information. But one of the slides that he showed surprised me. Showed that the adopted versus the actual gross revenue tax for 2022 was 33 million less than adopted. 23 was 42 million and 2024, the collected was 48 million less than the adopted. To me, when I read that, not being in a CPA, but when I read that, I think the government thinks we're making more money than we actually are. And I think the bulk of the money that's coming into the government of Guam from gross revenue tax is coming from Department of Defense and from the payroll taxes that are paid to the H2 workers and to the local employees. I, it is my experience that the, the private sector on Guam has not enjoyed the same benefit from the military presence and buildup that the government coffers have. That's my, my impression. I, so I made a couple of notes here. The rainy day fund, which I was surprised to hear had 125 million in it. I was under the impression that it was about 58 million.
Yeah, let me just correct that real quick. It is around 58, I think, Steve. And it also, and it also hits a ceiling. So within this next fiscal year, quite possibly, depending on what revenues we adopt, we will hit that ceiling and then we will no longer collect it unless we need it and we use it and then we need to rebuild it. So it does hit a level where it stays at, but yeah, it's around, I think 57, no Steve, or 60? Rainy day, anyway, we can back to you, but it's not 125.
Okay. But it's nice to have these ideas thrown out there. Actually, Senator Montanani had asked a question of someone else. I'd like to answer it if you don't mind. If, one of the ways about how we generate income, I would like, from, from where I sit in, in my private business, I see a huge gap in the, in the lack of collection of real property taxes. The real property taxes are ridiculously low on Guam. And I have to say, we're, we're not collecting them. The invoices are not being sent to the person who, who bought the property that year. And there's a huge gap in collections. I think there's been discussion about using technology to improve that process. And I actually had a conversation with Cisco Hotapi about that last week. So I know there's people working on it and thinking of it, but that's a, that's a huge gap. As well as the Amazon tax, which, which I, I know when I shop on Amazon, when I'm in California visiting my parents, there's an automatic tax attached to it that just gets sent to the state of California. I, it seems to me like a smart IT person would be able to put Guam on an automatic taxation level. So, but I'm speaking over my head on that one, so I'll be quiet about it. I would like to say that I, I think for the most of us, we have family members that are employees of the government of Guam. In our office alone, I, would be very difficult for me to find someone that did not have a family member. Including me, my son is a police officer and I know how hard he works and I fear for his safety when there aren't enough police officers on the road. So it's extremely important to me that he is not only safe and backed up by his fellow officers, but that he's compensated. He and his cohort are compensated for the work that they do. I, every time there's a horrible car crash, I pray for whoever the responding officer is because I know it's not. It's, it's, anyway. So we're not, as a business community, I don't think any of us are suggesting that we lower the standards or the services that are provided by the government of Guam. I don't think any of us are suggesting that we lower the capital improvements, that we improve our schools, that we improve our hospitals. I think what's happening is in this moment, the private sector is in deep kimchi. And we, we need the relief now. We've been right there, step by step of the way, when the government needed more input of funds. I would like, I would like to know, and I don't know of anyone yet, that has been able to tell us what the actual effect of the 2017 Trump tax cuts, what the actual effect was at that time. I know there were anticipated effects, but I don't know what the actual effects were. My belief is that we got by just fine and still posted surpluses. So I think our funds need to be, my personal opinion is, those funds need to go back to the private sector right now. If we have, if we have hard times again, the private sector's already, always been there. But for now, the private sector needs our help. If we don't have, if we don't have tourism to come back to, it's, it's our, it's our last, the last leg on our stool and we need to protect that. So I would ask you to please support the rollback of the BPT and support Bill 11. And thank you very much for your time.
Sis Massey, Kim Anderson. Does anyone on the panel here, any senators, have any questions for this panel? Okay, seeing none, I want to thank you for your time and excuse you at this time and we'll now call up the next panel. So next is Ron Young. Are you just providing your written or are you gonna come up? Say again? Okay, thank you, Ron. So we'll just take your written. Thank you very much. Mr. John Martinez, please come up. And then we have a series of written. We got written from ABC Stores in support, DHS in support, GPO in support. So next individual is Desiree Dezama. Is Desiree here? Yeah. Bobby Shringi, you were called up earlier. Okay, you're good. Okay. So Desiree Dezama, is Desiree here? Joanne Agun from Gar. Joanne Agun from Gar. Neo Munia. I guess they're just doing written. Okay, so those are written. Joe Arnett, please come forward. Is Joe here? I thought I saw Joe Arnett. Oh, just supporting? Okay, Joe's just supporting. So we're going to the next list. Is Benson still here? I saw Benson earlier. Okay, Benson's not here. Tom Shimizu, please come forward. And then I thought I saw Bob Peron. Is Bob Peron still here? Perrin? Bobby left? Okay. So Tom Shimizu is there. Let's see. Matthew Hunter, Matt Hunter? Okay, I don't see Matt Hunter. So John Thomas Brown and Carl Peterson, I know you spoke last time, but you may have more to say. So you're certainly welcome to come to the table. Okay, so if I go back to my trusty list, I think it's John Martinez who's up first. Mr. Martinez, and thank you for the articles you've been writing. I've been following along. Sis Massey, Mr. Martinez. And identify yourself, please.
John Martinez, private, from Tamuining. Just need to kind of throw out here a bit, I kind of froze my tail on that. Honorable senators, thank you for the opportunity to support, to submit testimony and propose rollback of the gross receipt tax. I fully support efforts to provide meaningful relief to Guam's private sector. However, I urge this body to move forward with a targeted rollback that preserves the captive income, particularly from the military buildup. And until we find a solution that delivers relief without sacrificing this critical revenue, this revenue stream, the rollback should not move forward. A vehicle, a viable solution, lies in balance. A careful structured rollback with a clear exemption on building construction, both for military and civilian projects offers a practical path forward. If we apply the rollback to all sectors, we risk forfeiting a substantial portion of tax revenue. Guam's current GRT system already features tiered rates based on income levels and reducing the rate to 4% will provide meaningful relief to local businesses. However, the rollback should be limited to construction companies that are domiciled and file annual income tax returns on Guam. General contractors that do not meet this criteria, particularly those engaged in large scale financed, in large scale federal construction project, often operate outside of Guam's tax framework and benefiting from its infrastructure and services should continue to be assessed, to be assessed the full 5% GRT. This position ensures that companies truly invested in Guam's economy benefit from the rollback. It is important to note that subcontractors owner of military base projects are exempt from the GRT. They pay zero. At a time when our economy continues to feel the effects of a declining tourism industry, the loss of compact impact funding and the uncertainty of future federal cuts, we must protect our revenue source. Above all, this government must fully recognize the value and contribution of the private sector to Guam's long-term stability. The persistent imbalance between government and private sector worsened by wage disparities and shrinking of local enterprise cannot be ignored any longer. If left unaddressed, this divide will erode economic confidence and opportunities. If there's ever a time to make the bold corrective decisions, it's now. The current rollback proposal should not just be viewed as a tax adjustment, but as an opportunity to reset our economic priorities. We must move forward beyond short-term political wins and towards long-term structural reform that empowers our private sector, restores balance in government employment and ensures that influx of federal funding does not overshadow the development of our local industry. Moreover, if Guam experiences an economic rebound, whether through tourism or federal recovery programs, additional GRT reductions can be considered. But such decisions should be strategic, not automatic and certainly not tied to across-the-board government pay raises that widen the public sector divide. The decisions made today will shape the direction of our island for decades to come. Let us not waste this moment. Let us move forward with clarity, courage and respect for all sectors of our economy. Respectfully submitted in the spirit of responsibility and good governance. I just do want to make a couple of statements. Now, in supporting this rollback, what I meant here is that, is that we cannot do a trade-off. We cannot, if, we cannot lose the only new income, the only industry that brings us new, you know, fresh. In other words, we cannot risk losing any of this federal money now. And, 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 you know, it's important that we get this 1% back. But in the meantime, when we, you know, it, I'm just asking that we, that we have a solution. And this is one solution so that this way, we can get the rollback, the rollback back and not have to lose any of this federal monies. Now, I know that what you're saying is that, of course, you know, that, well, you know, I take, I take, I take the, I take the, I take the, I visualize the quarters in the bucket, you know. Where you tap these, you know, coins in the bucket and you mix and so forth. You know, you know, it's there, it's in this one. But then again, when you, you know, in, in, this is, this is our only source of new money right now is, you know, is, you know, is with this, you know, is with the money that's, that's coming in from the military, you know, construction. that's, that's coming in from the military, you know, construction. And, you know, the amount is not small here, you know? We're talking of, we're talking of owner about $30 million that, that, and that's going to be the trade-off. Okay, so, um, and then, you know, when we hear, when we hear things like, you know, that, you know, read things like tax, you know, tax loopholes, uh, you know, we wonder, you know, why is it, why is it that, why is it that we have, that, that we have these domicile companies that are here and subcontract their entire project to off-island companies? And, um, you know, I, it's kind of hard to explain this because, you know, it's, because, you know, when you read things like, many off-island subcontractors working on Guam's military buildup are not domiciled and registered local and do not pay gross receipts tax or local income tax. This creates an unfair competitive advantage over local businesses that are fully taxed under Guam law. It also results in the loss of millions of potential tax revenue, even though these products are physically executed in Guam and utilize local infrastructure and resources. So anyway, again, like I mentioned here, is that, another thing is that, you know, you know, we talk about, we talk about where's, where does all this money go, you know? And, 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 you know, we have to consider that, right now, we're in the midst of the downturn of tourism and then the loss of the compact impact. Now, now, you know, when you, the, 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 the loss of this, uh, tourism dollar here, it's, it's, um, the magnitude is, you know, is, is substantial. You know, we're looking at, I, I, again, I make a comparison, again. The compact impact, the compact impact, uh, uh, you know, you know, the, the direct cost of the compact impact at one time was up to 155, was up to 155 million dollars. Of course, now with the, with the CIFRA and the, and the Medicaid, but it's down to 110. But it's starting to creep up again. And the last info that I got from, from the government was it, it, it's now back up to 130 some thousand dollars. Now, at the time, at the time when, uh, when, you know, when we, you know, when we had this tourism industry, we, we were, the taxable income was about 190 million dollars. I'm not talking about, about the offshoots. I'm just talking about the direct taxable income was 190. So if you look at that, that, that hundred, you know, all of that 190, 155, 155 million dollars of that goes to fund migrant costs. But now, we don't have, you know, we don't have tourism. Our taxable in, you know, our taxable income from, uh, I mean, I mean, our, our tax, you know, that we get from tourism is only 40, is only about 45 million. But we still have to pay the 135 million. So I, I, I think a lot of that is part of our unaccountable, where, where do you know the money go? Well, we're not thinking about that. That's money, that, that's, that's money lost, money not had, and we still have to pay, and we still have, and we still have, and we still have to pay it. Now, again, it, now, again, you know, with this, you know, with this, you know, with this military buildup, that, you know, we're looking at, we're, this again, is temporary. Now, now, we have to consider that, even though we're looking at, uh, the, the total, the, I mean, the, the amounts here right now is, that, 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 that we're generating here is substantial, but again, you know, you know, and if we take, losing that 1%, I, I, I mean, can't we have it where, 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 you know, where we implement, where at this, you know, we implement this where, 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 again, you know, we only, you know, we only have, where we, we only have, this applies to, this applies to, uh, uh, general, to general contractors, and everybody else qualifies. Now, 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 general contractors that, you know, that, that pay their, you know, that are, that are domiciled and, you know, and are incorporated, of course, they're entitled to the GRT. But those that are not, they should pay the full 5%. Now, in doing so, and you, and, and you exempt that, you still get, you still get your, you still get your full amount that you're getting from the, you know, from the, uh, 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 income from the, uh, from the military, you know, from the military, and, and you, and of course, we, you know, you can give, you know, we, we get our 1% uh, uh, you know, rollback. But if it's just, you know, just off the shoot, just take it and give it, and just give it across the board, then we lose that. And that's outside income. That's fresh, that's outside income. I mean, I mean, does that make sense that, you know, that maybe, or maybe we can, maybe we can have something, you know, maybe, let's polish it off. Maybe that's just, that, that's just one option. But we can't lose that. We just can't lose any of that military income that's coming in now. We should take advantage of it and, and keep it. So this way, everything is covered. And another thing is that, before, you know, there's, there'll be the question, there'll be the question of, there'll be the, there'll be the question of whether this is a, this is a fair application because of the adverse selection and so forth, and, but, 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 I, I looked into this and, 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 um, the exemption can be applied based on standard industry classifications already recognized in the tax regulatory codes. It does not constitute discriminatory adverse selection if it applies to all construction companies within the building classification that are not incorporated or domiciled on Guam and do not pay local taxes. Just this one option that comes into play, I mean, we still keep the, we still keep, we still keep that money, they're exempt, they have to pay the 5%. And anyway, these companies that are not domiciled and does not, you know, are not incorporated on Guam, all right? They should, they should, they should continue to pay. They should continue, continue to pay that, that 5%. And everybody else gets the 4%. And I went a step further, that what we're looking at here right now, this is a start where the government can truly come up and say, we want to create this balance. And maybe, when things get better in the next budget and we see that, you know, that, 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 you know, we have, that we have this surplus, maybe we can do one more and extend that, and extend that, and say, well, now, why don't we do this then? And, you know, for food and medication, let's reduce it down from 3% down, I mean, from 4% down to 3%. That's another move in sort of balancing, balancing the disparity. But just think, just keep in mind, the disparity now between, you know, between, between the private sector and the government is 72%, which is just not acceptable. Thank you.
Sí, just más, Mr. Martinez. Tom, I'm going to go to my right to you, Tom Shimizu, and I'm going to work my way back. Tom, you recognize it this time.
Good afternoon, senators. I, I'm not going to repeat, there's a lot, you know, I share the same sentiment for the, the folks that support the bill, so I'm not going to go on, on that. But I'm going to offer some areas or solutions to, you know, if your concern is we roll back the BPT, we're going to have a shortfall, etc., but there's a lot of areas that are already on the books that we're not collecting. I look at three areas I, to, to look into. Reven tax, customs, and the Section 30 funding. So I'll just look, I'll, I'll start with the Section 30 with more, when the military buildup, you know, the, the Marines are starting to come, they're going to start to live and work here, all their income taxes go to the Section 30. So that's going to be an increase that's, that's coming, even though construction's going to stop. Maybe that covers the shortfall. But the areas I really wanted to talk about where we can control is reven tax. And the way I see reven tax, that's the cash register for GovGuam. So we need to make sure that we have enough cash registers. We need to make sure that we fund reven tax, or at least they're putting the people, maybe the, you know, I'm not a advocate for bigger government, but if we have those limited-term appointees, let's put them in the right places. For example, all the work done for the military buildup, all of that is taxable. Now, are we collecting all of that? I, from what I understand, there's one person at GRT that is supposed to look at that. With that amount of money that's supposed to be collected, we probably need more. Has anybody done a reconciliation? Has anybody at reven tax said, hey, military buildup, what's the actual payout to all the contractors, to everything that happened in this year? And then it's simple math, you know, I'm, I'm not a CPA, but it's simple. If they spent a billion dollars, did we collect a billion dollars' worth of GRT? I don't know that that reconciliation has been done. But if we do that, then we can start going after the folks that need to pay, that are not paying, you know, like the off-island vendors, they're, from what I understand, they're, they're taxable at the GRT. So that's, that's, uh, one area. Let's, let's get that reconciled. There's a lot of GRT that is not being collected right now because if you go, there's retailers that don't ring it up. When, when the owner is doing, they're not ringing it up. We need to make sure that that's happening. Is anybody reconciling that? Probably not with, be, so, being so shorthanded in critical areas. That's, that's one area that I suggest we look at. The other one is customs. I, you know, when I lived on Saipan, when you got a box at the, at, at the post office, you didn't get to just go pick, you know, let the little card and pick it up. You went and saw customs. And customs said, where's your receipt? If you have the receipt for what came in, then you, you get assessed and you pay the tax on that. We don't do it on Guam. I believe if you, if you, if your online shipment comes in on FedEx, USPS, they assess it. But after you've done that a few times, you, you just say, Amazon, send my stuff via the United States Postal Service. That's not going to get taxed. That's not going to get taxed. So I was in a meeting and customs was there, and I suggested, you know, this is an area that we, we can collect on. He says, you know, Tom, Saipan has one post office, it's pretty easy. Well, Guam has more than one. I don't know, what, three or four or five? But we also have five times the population. So that's another area. We need to fund customs so that they can go out there and make sure that everything is being assessed, and we're not, we're not doing that. You know, I, I, Saipan, I forget the number, but they know, you know, they know what they collect from the internet sales. Let's do that. I, I, I didn't suggest it. We're so short-staffed, so that, so now we have 160,000 people that have a $1,000 GRT online sales use tax exemption. How do we track that? How do we track? It's impossible. We got to give customs more folks, or at least micromanage them, I guess, and say, are you putting the people where they need to be? And if not, then let's make sure that they do. So that, that's the main thing, you know? I fully support the rollback of the GRT in this bill. I'm counting on you guys to do it. But I also don't, I'm not one to just say, do this, do this, but don't offer any solutions or, you know, at least areas to look at. And that's what I suggest. Take a look at those areas. Fund the cash register, which is reven tax. And in business, the next important thing is inventory. Customs is inventory, right? They know what's coming in and going around. We just need to take care of those things. Thank you.
Sí, just más, Tom Shimizu. Sir, I'm going to recognize you. Please identify yourself for the record.
Good afternoon, senators. Is that close enough? My name is Joel Shabon. I'm from DKSH, but I don't know nothing as coronal. We've been in Guam since 1972, so 53 years. And retail, we sell watches, sunglasses, and we have a mix of local customers and, and of course, tourists. So I think everybody said a lot of things, and I'm going to make it very short because, one, I don't have a written testimony. But, but I would like to give you, I think, a few, a few points, I think, to show you what we are facing as the tourism industry. We used to have 45 employees. We are down to 20. We used to have seven stores. We are down to three. We used to, you know, the, the company is in charge of micromanaging, we used to have Saipan. And, and of course, what happened in Saipan is different than Guam, but we had to close Saipan. And I, when Mr. Guerero, I believe his name is, he was saying, why don't we do the, the 5% to 4% on an incremental basis over three years? I can tell you one thing is, even after 52 years in Guam, in one year, if this continues, we won't be around in one year. And, and I have clear, we have clear direction from our headquarters that if the situation in Guam does not improve and fast, in one year, we won't be around. So, so, and we, we run many, many, you know, PNA's. We, beginning of this year, we were at a watch fair in Switzerland, that's where we get new brands. Some brands that are, of course, no Guam, but they are not interested to come or come back and because of the situation. So I'm not saying it's directly related to the 5% to 4% tax, but what I'm saying, I think it's, it's related to the tourism industry and how challenging it is and difficult it is. So anything else could, you know, help businesses. I think that's all on my side. Thank you.
Sir, just very clear for the record-keeping purposes, your name?
First name, Joel, J-O-E-L, Joel. And last, oh, you have it?
Oh, it's in your written. Okay, I'm sorry. Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you to my colleagues for pointing that out. Yeah. We just need to get this committee report correct, so.
Thank you.
Thank you for your testimony, sir. I appreciate it.
Thank you, senators.
Please identify yourself for the record and continue.
Good afternoon. It's Matthew Hunter. I represent the Guam Contractors Association. And at the Guam Contractors Association, we have a total of 522 member companies that employs over 18,400 employees. Not all of them are contractors. In March of 2018, our 34th Guam Legislature passed Bill 28248-34LS with eight i's and seven nays, with Senators Thomas Ada, William Castro, Benjamin Cruz, James Espalden, Francisco Estevez, Tommy Morrison, Luis Munia, and Joe Sinagastin, all voting in favor of the bill. That bill was eventually signed into law by then-Governor Eddie Calvo and became Public Law 34-87, which increased the gross receipts tax from 4% to 5%. The version that passed through the legislature, oh, sorry, 4%, through the, through the, yeah, the version that passed through the legislature and became law stipulated that this tax increase was temporary and had a sunset provision that would only be in effect between April and September 2018 for six months. Okay? This temporary increase intended to fund shortfalls at the Guam Memorial Hospital, specifically for its operations, modernization, and creating a GMHA stabilization fund for the ailing hospital, as well as Department of Education, specifically to fund its capital needs, and the General Fund of the Government of Guam to address the tax base erosion as a direct result of the passage of the Tax Cuts and Jobs Act of 2017 enacted by the 115th United States Congress and signed into law by then-President Donald Trump. Then, in August of 2018, our 34th Guam Legislature passed Bill 323-34COR, again with eight i's and seven nays, with Senators Thomas Ada, Benjamin Cruz, James Espalden, Tommy Morrison, Luis Munia, Talina Nelson, and Joe Sin Augustine, all voting in favor of the bill. This bill, titled the General Appropriations Act of 2019, a budget bill, okay? Also extended the temporary increase of the Business Privilege Tax, or GRT, whatever you want to call it, indefinitely, effectively eliminating the sunset clause in the previous increase, pulling the proverb, proverb, sorry, proverbial wool over the public's eyes and cementing the phrase by Gideon Tucker, "No man's life, liberty, or property are safe when the legislature is in session." Seven years later, we're still paying the increased Business Privilege Tax rate that again was only supposed to be temporary and only for six months at that. Ask yourselves, did raising the Business Privilege Tax accomplish what its intent was? Take a look around. Have the problems that existed at GMHA at that time gotten better? Or have they gotten worse? Is GMHA financially solvent? Do we still have a rundown hospital that fails to meet the needs of our people? Has GMHA been modernized? Or any government agency for that effect? What is the status of the GMHA Stabilization Fund? These questions are fairly easy to answer. Just look at all the news articles and legislative oversight hearings over the past three years. The sad fact is, GMH is worse off today than it was in 2018. What about the Guam Department of Education? Is DOE better off today than it was in 2018? As was the intent of Public Law 3487. Schools that don't meet health and safety standards. As the schools are crumbling right before our eyes. Unfortunately, these questions are also easy to answer. And again, the sad answer is a resounding no. What about the General Fund? Surprisingly, we have been lucky here and boast of a surplus every year. Something that the majority of people on this island that you serve are not so lucky to be able to say. While most have to make the difficult choice of, do I pay rent this month or do I eat? Or do I pay power this month or do I eat? Do I get my medication this month or do I eat? The sad fact that has been proven time and time again is that no amount of additional money will fix the problems faced at GMHA or DOE or any of the other problems faced by other departments within the government. We just continue to throw good money after bad, hoping for different results. And I hate to say it, but that's the definition of insanity. Trying the same thing over and over, expecting different results. The problems that the government faces will only be fixed when the people at the top are forced to account for their failures and are ultimately replaced and not replaced with political appointees, but replaced with actual, qualified, experienced, and competent professionals. Also evidenced by recent letters written by employees of GMHA, calling for the resignation of the entire upper management. The private sector and the people of Guam deserve better and should not be penalized and shoulder the costs for the failures of the government and its department and agency heads. In 2018, when then-candidate Lulio Guerrero was deep in campaign mode, trying to win her bid for governor of Guam, she promised she would lower the gross receipts tax back to the 4%, but has since been strongly opposed to any of the several attempts of our legislature and has tried in, has tried in doing right by the people and lowering the Business Privilege Tax. So much so that in August of 2019, she said that the Business Privilege Tax rate of 5% should remain forever. That was not the intent. That was not the deal. And most recently, in the doom and gloom warnings against doing so, yet proudly boasting over the recent couple of years the fiscal responsibility of her cabinet and ensuring a multimillion-dollar surplus every year and the collection of taxes far in excess of projections. The primary argument against the aim of lowering the GRT is it will not result in lower costs to our people because the business community won't lower prices anyway. While this argument may be true for some businesses, this doesn't necessarily speak for all of the businesses. And even if businesses choose not to lower their prices, they are more likely, as you've heard from multiple different testimonies, to do other things with that 1%, such as raise salaries and wages for their employees, hire additional employees, reinvest into their businesses such as renovations, cleanups, carrying additional stock and inventory, invest in more training for their employees, technology upgrades, expansions and opening new locations, et cetera. All of these possibilities would drive more economic activity within the island and drive additional taxes as well, which would offset any perceived loss in tax revenues. The businesses that do actually lower their prices will in turn be more competitive. Any of these possibilities would actually benefit the people of this, the island you claim to serve. I have a wild idea. When a business can't afford to operate, it is forced to make cuts and live within its means. It's the same for people as well. When I can't afford to pay my rent or my power bill or whatever else, I'm forced to make the hard decisions on what I can and cannot afford to do. Do I get a smaller place? Do I not eat? Am I stuck with Ichiban and buttered rice? Or can I get that ribeye? If the government cannot afford the 1% cut in GRT, thereby finally giving a small crumb of relief back to the business community and potentially the people as a whole, all evidence to the contrary, then the government is too bloated and needs to be right-sized. They need to tighten their belts, so to speak, and live within their means. In conclusion, it is far past the time for promises made to the people of Guam be kept. I highly encourage all the people of Guam to watch how our legislators vote on Bill 1138 and hold them accountable in the polls during the next election. I challenge and implore our legislators to do the right thing for the people. Stand up and fight for the people you serve, the same people who elected you to represent them, regardless of which political party you are affiliated with. Unify, do right by the people, and pass Bill 1138 by an overwhelmingly unanimous vote and send a message to the governor that it's past time for talk and time for action. Thank you. I have a couple other comments I wanted to make on top of this from listening to everybody's testimony. Phasing out this 1% over a specified timeline, we don't support that. When, when the legislature increased from 4% to 5%, did they phase it in or did it become immediate? So why should we have to phase it out? For Senator Sabrina's question on the first panel of what can be done to reduce government costs, better efficiency, better management, right? We're in the digital age, yet everything in GovGuam is still paper-based, everything. I have taken many government projects as a contractor. And one instance stands out as, as a real accountability issue. I have seen government employees standing around literally all day long for an entire eight-hour day doing nothing but this. If that was the private sector, that person would have been fired. But it's okay in our government. I have also seen very good government employees. So I'm not saying all government employees are bad. I have seen some really good ones. I personally know of teachers who buy air conditioning units for their classrooms because they're not provided with air, working air conditioning units. I have personally seen and witnessed maintenance personnel at various government agencies taking money out of their own pocket and going to buy things at Home Depot and other supply stores so they can fix the problems that that agency is having, whether it be a simple plumbing problem, an electrical problem, whatever it is, because that agency doesn't have the funds to pay for it. I've seen these things. Okay? Our members, a lot of our members, have stepped up when this government asked for help last year, when this government could not open a public school in time for the school season to start. And DOE sent out letters asking for help. Multiple, several of our members stepped up and provided material, provided labor, et cetera, to help put these schools into a shape where they can open at their own cost. They were never reimbursed for that, never asked to be reimbursed for that. They did that to help the government and help our people. That includes members of the Contracting Association that are not incorporated on Guam. These large MAC contractors that I've heard multiple times, well, we can just keep them at the 5% and everybody else can be at the 4% because they're not invested in Guam. They are invested in Guam. My company as well. And even after the typhoon, I can count numerous instances where even my small little company was out on the roads clearing village roads so that people could get out of their houses to get basic supplies. Roads that would not have been cleared because they're secondary roads. So they would not have been cleared from the government for weeks because it wasn't a priority. It was a bigger priority to clear the primary roads. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Mr. John Thomas Brown.
Thank you. Excuse me. Thank, thank you, Senator. I'm going to keep this very short because we were told to, essentially. This was, it was about 1982 when I came here. And about 1984, they wanted to do what we're trying to do today. And I thought, well, that's interesting. Because I was hired on at J&amp;G as a lawyer, not, not a, not a person who sells stuff. And it, it was just interesting to see it twist this time. And J&amp;G is a large enterprise. But we don't get into the problems of the, at least I don't see them because I'm not in the, those parts of the game. The, excuse me. I do have a bitter case of a dementia and I'm having trouble. But I, I think that I will get better relief from listening to him than trying to talk to me.
Thank you, John Thomas Brown. You've contributed a lot to our fixing procurement laws. You've done well work and we appreciate you. Sir?
Yes, I thank John Brown too. He's done a lot of things, advocate for Guam especially. He's done a lot of things and you did good, John. You're okay. My name is Carl Peterson. I have a company named Money Resources. Next month, I've had that company for 60 years. That's pretty hard to do when you're only 35. But we made it work. Anyway, honorable senators, I hope you enjoyed your holiday, the long weekend. You know, Independence Day is a, a day we remember the separation from tyranny. And we recommit, take the opportunity, recommit to liberty. And all the decisions we make and the real essence of independence is that we're able to make our own decisions, to think and to act accordingly to rational judgment, encouraged to think in yourself and live on your own judgment, taking responsibility for your actions. That's independence. But back to this subject. The first hearing we had The first hearing we had, I want to discuss the first question that was asked of the government. It said, how are we going to replace the $40 to $60 million we might lose if this goes through? Well, they're asking that same question on the mainland or they're saying that if you make the tax rates permanent from what they are today, to make them permanent will cost the government $4 to $5 trillion. Well, there's a lot of fallacies with economics and more than any other study. And the art of economics consists of looking not merely at the immediate, but the long-term effects of any act or any policy tracing the consequences from that policy, not merely with looking at one group, the obvious group when you do something, but the consequences to the beneficiaries or the people that suffer the consequences from the decision. So we're going to have to take a look at what the beneficiaries of lowering the GRT to 4%. You know, one of the things that teaches you a great deal, if you take the time to read it, it sure helped me along the way many years ago. And it was the, it was a book by Henry Hazlitt called Economics in One, I'll remember that soon. But anyway, it was in Economics in One. But the very first chapter is the broken window theory. And it tells a story of two people that decided to open up a restaurant and it had a great view, so they put in a big bay window. And they were having a party to celebrate the opening of the restaurant and the party was going well until a vandal threw a brick through the window. Everybody was up in arms about that. They tried to find the villain and somebody takes off to do that while the others stood around. And in a very short period of time, they discuss what had happened and somebody said, well, at least the glazier is my neighbor. He has kids and they're going to replace that window by using the glazier. He's going to benefit from this and he has kids that go to school, that need food, clothing, shoes, whatever. We need transportation to take them and we need a house to live in. And the discussion didn't take long before it really looked like this was a great opportunity that the window got broken. And the question is, what's wrong with this theory? And of course, what's wrong with it is the two people that own the restaurant was denied the choice of how they had to spend their money because they had children also that go to school, that need food and clothing and shelter and transportation. And if you trace the, what happens to spending, you will find that it's not necessarily how it's perceived. It's not that the government lost money, it's that people who could get the 40 to 60 million or whatever the number is are denied the opportunity to spend that money for themselves to create, as we've heard from Mark just now, all the many things that people can do with money. And so we need to think about the beneficiaries of reduction of the grocery receipts tax. The government has lots of opportunities or alternatives to the money. They can reduce spending, they can merge departments, they can integrate activities. Just take the privatization of GTA, what has happened in that industry since the date that we privatized GTA. Of course, everybody at the time was saying, well, employees are going to suffer a great deal. As it turns out, the employees are making a lot of money. And not only that, but there's many other companies in competition with GTA. They become part of the tax base, all creating more revenue for government. Another example was that the university had some conclave of some sort on a Saturday afternoon and they wanted people to speak to the MBA classes. There was four classes. And so they, the classes were asked, each one was asked, okay, you're part of the MBA class. Who can tell me, who creates a job? Where does the money come from? Not a single member of all four classes, including the professors, could answer the question. So you have to go to the next level, the next level, the next level. Okay, so you, ever since you were a child, you wanted to make widgets and you've been thinking about that for all these years and tomorrow you're going to open your doors. But today you say, oh my God, I can't answer the phone and talk to the customer at the same time, so I need somebody to help me out. And then we'd ask them, what, where'd the money come from? Who created that job? And finally, somebody would say, well, it'd be you, Nate. You'd have to pay for it. Okay, well, where did the proprietor get the money? Well, from the bank? No, you're not going to get the money from the bank if you don't have adequate credit and you use some other collateral. So it can't be the bank. Well, you get it from the government? No, the government's not going to start it. Where does it come from? Again, we finally get to down to, well, you'd have to come up with it. And where did I, where did I get the money? Eventually, we get to the point where they say, well, you use your savings. Your savings creates the investment for the company and that means that all the money you've earned, you didn't eat it all, you didn't spend it all, just like the people that will get this money, they're not going to eat it, they're going to use it for something. And Mark did a good job of explaining what possibilities there are. And so it's, finally, they would get it. And to one of the professor's credit, got up and said, you know, I've been working for the university for 36 years. I've been teaching this class for many, many years and I learned an awful lot about economics. And so we'd ask, well, where do taxes come? Where does the government get its money? Oh, it gets its money from taxes or fees, like if you get a driver's license, it's a fee to be able to drive. So the fee or taxes creates the money for the government. So the money, the revenue that the government gets has to come from taxes. Okay, well, then we got down to the point where the, when the government hires somebody, they don't pay any taxes. Well, they objected to that. Oh, yes, every check I get, it shows that I'm paying taxes. It seems that way, yes, but remember, all the revenue was taxes to start with. And in taking the $100 and giving you 80, withholding 20, didn't create any new tax revenue at all. It didn't expand the economic base. It was taxes and so the government employment does not create a new tax base. It doesn't broaden a tax base. Where does retirement come from? Retirement comes from taxes mostly and the employee uses some of this money if they contribute to the tax base. So it's a lot more than what meets the eye when you're talking about tax revenues or expenditures by the government. I think there's a lot of opportunities for the people to create business. We can keep some of our kids home, not going to the mainland. And we got to create a business. And if taxes come from the private sector, they can only come from profit, you don't pay taxes if you have losses. And so wouldn't it be a good idea to try to create more profit? If you create more profit in the private sector, you will have more jobs and more revenues. I mean, Kennedy, Reagan and Trump won showed that revenues go up if you reduce the tax base. This GRT is a reduction of the tax base and it will create more jobs. Thank you very much.
Senator Massey, Carl Peterson. I think there's a pirate in the room, so Mr. Fledwell, please come forward. You signed up to testify. Just have a seat and you've done this, I'm sure, 100 times. Identify yourself for the record and fire away.
I'm from Yipan Talafofo. I've lived on Guam 62 years. I've owned Pirate's Cove for 46 years. The biggest problem in running a private business on Guam is the government, from regulation to permitting to every step you have to go. Recently, the sanitary permits were raised, the licenses were raised. I mean, this 1% when it went up eight years ago, that was another raise. We cannot reduce the government. That is the problem here. We need to reduce the government. You have twice as many employees as you need. My business, I have 44 employees right now. It's more than I need, but the way people quit and the way things happen here and to provide the right service to my customers, I have to have a lot of employees. Those employees pay withholding tax, which goes to the government of Guam. What a gift. What state in the union wouldn't want all their employees withholding tax to go into their treasury? That should be enough money to operate this government and it should stay within that budget. To me, there shouldn't be any grocery receipts or business privilege tax at all. When I make a corporate profit, I have to pay the government of Guam $30,000 or whatever dollars from my profit, money I worked hard for. This government doesn't work hard. The water's rusty, the power's fluctuating, the hospital's wrecked, the prison's undone, the roads are terrible. Just tell me one thing that operates right and then you tell me you cannot reduce 1% because it costs $70 million. Whippy-doo-dah, $70 million is nothing around here. Nobody even can fathom or realize how much money this government has. There's no transparency, there's no accountability to me who pays a lot of tax, not just my employees, but when I make good money, I'm a money-making machine. But the last six years, I'm not a money-making machine. And now you guys are talking about taking away something that should never have been done to begin with. The government cannot live within its means, it must, the business has to. Tumon is a ghost town. Even when I drive around here locally, the roads are empty. People are leaving here. Why? They can't afford to be here. Why? Because the education their children get isn't good. I hire employees, they can't even fill out the application. So government of Guam standard of efficiency is nil. It's terrible. And the hospital, that's why this money was supposed to be used for, the hospital. The hospital's in terrible shape. In the meantime, politicians are talking about spending billions of dollars years down the line while daily our people are hurting when they go to the hospital because they can't get clean facilities or enough doctors or anything. The money is not being spent wisely. The 1%, take it off. I need it. It would save me like a couple grand a month and we all need it. The businesses, the government doesn't need to grow and I see people protecting this government. It makes me crazy. Where you need people in the areas of public safety and the hospital and the medical fields and stuff like that, you don't have enough. You've got tons of people working for the governor, tons of people working for these polished agencies, making huge amounts of money, much more than the private sector. I make like 100 grand a year. I'm worth a hell of a lot more. But I see people in the government that are making money that they're just wasting my money. That's all I have to say. And I'm definitely for you to roll this back and I want more transparency. I want to know how much money, this guy, I watched the whole thing in the beginning by Mr. Guerrero. What a great thing, you know, all this money, all this money. What difference does it make? You know, nobody's accounting for everything. Nobody is being responsible for how it's spent. We need a new prison. Tax and revenue, our tax collectors have a terrible building to work out of. The people have terrible service to get their driver's license. I mean, if you tell me what good this 1% does, I'll be amazed. Thank you.
Senator Massey, Jeff Fledwell. So that concludes everyone who has signed up. Gentlemen, I'm not sure if there'll be any questions for you, but I'm going to have our senators give them the opportunity to, if they have a question, or to close with a comment or two. So I'm going to start with the vice chair and, by the way, welcome Speaker, Speaker Blas. Start with the vice chairman and vice speaker of our legislature, Senator Adet. You may proceed.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Just to like to thank everyone who came down today and also in the previous public hearing, I think that was on June 9th as well, giving your testimony on this bill. I think it's very important to hear what the public has to say and as we go along and move forward and analyze everything, everything that you all here had said and what our government OFB has said. And I think that we're going to come out with a solution and hopefully that we'll be able to do that soon and we'll see how we can move forward. But thank you again, everyone, for your testimony today and we truly appreciate both the testimonies today and the testimonies from June 9th. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Senator Massey, Vice Speaker Adet. Senator Jesse Luhann.
Thank you, thank you, Mr. Speaker. Or I'm sorry, Mr. Chairman, thank you very much for the folks that turned out today and also the previous public hearing as well. Thank you very much for your testimony. And again, I was part of the 28th Guam Legislature when, actually in the 27th, when they increased the GRT and we fought hard to roll that back in the 28th. And here it is, 10 legislatures later, same thing. So I look forward to leading that again, help lead that for the rollback as well. But thank you very much again. You guys all have a great evening. Thank you very much. We're not going to be here till 10:00, looks like it. Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman.
Senator Massey, Senator Luhann. But we were ready to. So next would be Senator Joe Esten Augustin.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. And thank you to the panel that are present tonight and the panel earlier. Like I said earlier, I have no reservation on the rollback and I just look forward to going over all the testimonies that have been presented and then we move forward from there. There's no reason why we can't get it right. I think it's lasted long enough and I've heard that from the testimony and we just got to move forward and fix it. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Senator Massey, Senator Esten Augustin. Senator Sabrina Salas-Mantinani.
Just wanted to thank everybody that came to the previous hearing and this hearing and sharing your testimony. I just want to let you all know that I am listening and I hope that my colleagues are also listening intently and I look forward to working on ways to right-size the government, reduce government spending, consolidate agencies, everything that was said today. And I'm glad I asked that question earlier on areas you thought that we could cut because I think it's clear that we really do need to. So thank you so much.
Senator Massey, Senator Sabrina Salas-Mantinani. Senator Shelley Calvo.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I just want to offer my two cents on everything. You know, I call this the big, beautiful bill for businesses. Truth be told, my stance on this one is this is long overdue. For many years, I've heard businesses here in Guam complain. Businesses are suffering. This is a time when tourism is at all-time low and businesses are truly hurting. And this is really the time, this is already a plea call. And this is a time where we need to address this. Aside from that, in the spirit of fairness, in the spirit of truthfulness, and in the spirit of keeping the promise, this rollback must happen. It's long overdue. I know that businesses are in hardship. People are in hardship. Inflation keeps on, commodities keeps on rising. We cannot keep up with employees, benefits, the whole shebang. Now, I don't know how we're going to move forward from this one, but I do support Bill Number 11. Truth be told, I'm looking for a clear strategy that addresses the fiscal gap, whether through offsetting savings, phased implementation, or economic expansion. I do understand the concerns about lost revenue. You know, these concerns are real. We cannot ignore the projected reduction to the general fund. But that's precisely why this moment demands smart trade-offs, not paralysis. If we align this policy with spending restraint, targeted efficiency, and renewed investment in compliance systems, we can make this tax rollback work without compromising essential services or people. This bill also serves as a prompt. It invites the government to reassess its priorities, streamline operations, and reduce structural wastes. That is not authenticity. It's actually accountability. And to those who ask whether this tax relief will reach our consumers, I share your expectation. Transparency is pricing, fair market practices, and consumer trust must accompany this legislative Earlier in the testimonies, we've heard businesses offer that they will provide their employees' raises, they offered expansion to their services, they offered good things in exchange of the rollback of the 1%. Now, these are conversations that we should initiate, not avoid alongside our private sector partners. Truth be told, this is how I feel. It is the government's job to take care of the people. And not for the people to break their backs to take care of the government. And that's truly what I feel. And that's truly where I stand. Now, whether we move forward with rolling back 1% or we do increment, I say this, I support this bill. I support the measure. I support the initiative. Because this proposal represents more than a percentage point. It's a recognition that economic recovery must be shared. It shouldn't just be the private sector. You know, the implementation of this, it's still going to take time. So that means we all have time to prepare. Everybody, we're all in the same boat. The worst that can happen, which I fear, is for more businesses to close down. Because I'm seeing businesses close down left and right, and I don't want to see more. This has got to stop already. We need to help each other. It's a recognition that economic recovery must be shared, all of us, all together, not only celebrated in spreadsheets, but felt in neighborhoods, shops, and kitchen tables across our island. So I respectfully ask each and every one to support as we take this step forward, cautious but confident, responsive and responsible. On that note, I'd like to thank the author of the bill, my good friend Sean Gomatao. And I, sir, I truly support this bill, and I thank you for doing this for our business community. This is imperative, and I truly support this. Thank you so much. Thank you to the panel. Thank you to everybody who rendered their testimony today and the previous hearing. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Sides must see Senator Calvo. Senator Barnett, you're recognized at this time.
Sides must see Mr. Chair for holding this second hearing. I really appreciate the testimony that was provided today. As someone, I think I spent a summer working in a senator's office many, many years ago, but, you know, I spent all of my career in the private sector. So I can definitely appreciate, not necessarily agree with all of your perspective outside looking in, but yeah, I think you guys have definitely passionately communicated your frustration. I think it's a frustration that's shared by a lot of people on Guam. And so, yeah, this is a very big decision that we have to make here in the legislature. And we've got a way, you know, constituents have been talking to me about it, and they've been saying things like, okay, if we, a lot of the businesses are talking about the level of service that we provide, but how would we be able to provide improved services with $70 million, with $70 million removed from the general fund? With that being said, I think, again, each and every one of you has communicated very well in your testimony. Your need for this, and I think that we've all got a really tough decision to make. I did, I know one of the people writing testimony had talked about, and I think this is kind of a continuing theme with a lot of the testimony, in that this legislature is going to be the legislature that grants this BPT rollback. And, you know, I'm just doing the con in my head. I'm not entirely sure if that's true, but I did kind of want to state for the record something I've noticed with this legislature and the previous one as well, is where we have senators who have a, who may benefit from a measure that's going to be passed, and they get up and they speak passionately about it, and they, the debate in favor of it, and they discuss all the merits of these bills. But then when it comes time to vote, they ask to be recused because of their interests. And I think that's a very real question that we have to ask the senators here at the 38th Guam Legislature, is who stands to benefit from the passage of this bill? Who has businesses that are going to see relief? Not necessarily that it's a bad thing, but I think the people of Guam deserve to know whether these conflicts exist. So thank you again, Mr. Chair. I'm going to review the testimony here today as well as the testimony that was provided in the initial hearing. I very appreciate the chance to talk. Sides must see.
Sides must see, Senator. I'll remind folks that it's the body that can decide whether they get recused or not. We can, we could say no, they have to vote. So that's also on the table. Senator July.
Sides must see, Mr. Chair. Thank you all for your testimony today. I just want to assure you that it's loud and clear. I too was in the private sector, and I am very concerned about any further loss of jobs. I don't think we can afford that here on Guam, no matter what we do. And as Mr. Hunter pointed out, I never voted in favor of the 5% increase, but that was not because of any threats made to me. But I did support reductions to 3%, the exemptions that are now covering 90% of the businesses on Guam. I also authored the liquid fuels tax relief and a couple of those energy credit reliefs for households. And I've also put a, passed a law that is going to prevent real property tax increases for households until they're transferred, unless there's a transfer, but for single-family households. But I do appreciate the suggestions that have been made, especially those of how to fund, how we're going to fund GMH especially, and these critical agencies if the 80 million BPTs removed. We were told this morning, I mean, we know, we should expect more loss of federal funds for these agencies, but we're not being told exactly how much yet. And so we still need to see that. We were told by EPA this morning that their entire agency's funding, they're one of those agencies that's almost all federally funded, has been removed. So I was not aware of that till this morning. So I expect we're going to be hearing a lot more of those things, and I hope we hear them sooner rather than later, so that we can reprioritize what we find critical and what we don't. But the suggestions as to dealing with collections on transfers of real property, the collections on federal contractors, I'm just not sure if those are going to yield 80 million, right, or what we need with additional federal taxes, not taxes, but additional federal funding cuts to those agencies as well. So I'm going to try to work, see if we can make that work. But the audit that the public auditor did estimated only 22 million that we were losing in federal contract taxes that, and DRT, revenue tax completely disputed that, if I recall correctly. And so that amount, they say, is much less. And they don't project any increase in regular collections from, like pass unpaid, which I tried to push them on to see if there's any other pockets that they were not enforcing enough that we can bring these collections in for the next fiscal year to make up for some of these losses. That did not sound promising, so I just wanted to share that with you. But again, I'm going to continue to work with the author. As much information as we can get is going to help us to be able to do it, to do what we need to do as soon as possible. Sides must see again to all of you for all your testimony. Thank you.
Sides must see Senator July. Speaker Blas.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chair. And you know, the great thing about technology today and YouTube is you can multitask and do your work on your desk and watch at the same time. So I tell you, I know I watched you when you were talking. You know, I've always gone to the guise of 5% of zero is the same as 4% of zero. Okay? And, you know, because the question here is, you know, how do we, how do we save that base that this government relies on? And then the other thing that I'm hearing is, you know, there's a figure of 79 million dollars. But I guess the question that needs to be asked, and maybe I'll call Carl, you can answer this question because you so eloquently provided that little story. 79 million dollars more into the economy to be able to circulate, how much of that will be, how much of tax revenue can be generated with that 79 million dollars?
In all private sector spending, there can be multiples, multiple turns of the money. And I buy a pair of shoes for my child or a car or whatever, it helps the economy. Government spending, it does not broaden the base. So I can't tell you how much because it will be multiple, make multiple turns of the money.
So what we're saying basically is while we're trying to cut back on 79 million dollars, put it back in the economy, that 79 million dollars can generate enough businesses to be able to generate more tax revenue, which is done by the private sector, not the government sector.
It sure would.
So that's what I'm getting at. Okay? Is that there is a, there's the, so the 79, while we're looking at the 79 million dollar hard figure, there's money to be made of the 79 million dollars that would bring it back.
Yes.
And recognizing that government doesn't work in the process of everybody getting the money all at the same time, all at one time, over a cycle of a year, that 79 million dollars can roll over so many times to provide some enough revenue.
A lot, a lot. Kennedy, Reagan, and Trump won proved that. They reduced the taxes, and the revenues exploded.
So when you improve economic activity for businesses, the more employees that you make and the more businesses that you get, the more revenues that you can attain.
Exactly.
In many different areas.
Exactly.
My point is exactly. And I thank you very much for being able to.
I like the way you think.
That's something that we need to factor in here is, okay, we're not losing 79 million dollars. We're reinvesting this 79 million dollars, and as a result of that, we're going to be able to gain additional tax revenues.
That's right.
Thank you very much. Thank you very much, Mr. Chair. Thank you.
Sides must see. Before I go to the author to close, I just want to make a few points, because many on the panel today said, watch, watch your legislature. So I'll take you back to the 37th Guam Legislature. Right now, the budget that we currently have, I was the one who proffered the amendment to stop the madness of the 120 million dollars that was chasing 27 million dollars of excess revenue and shut it down. That's one of the reasons why, right now, we don't have people running around with their hair on fire saying, how come you didn't fund my program? Because the money wasn't there. When I was fortunate, or some say, had the misfortune of my colleagues agreeing to allow me to chair this committee, the first thing I've done is to ensure that excess revenues right now are not appropriated. I've got lashes on my back because of that. But it's the reason why, right now, we're sitting here with 32 million dollars of excess revenue, adjusted revenue, for other commitments that have been made. So this legislature has been trying. This legislature has teed this up with our leadership. Now, as you say, watch, there are some good points that were made today that we'll have to consider in the committee, but we're going to continue moving forward. When you said watch, watch also how some will try to have it both ways. They will tell you they're for it, but then they'll constantly introduce bills, and they'll constantly ask for additional revenue for the so-called priorities and tack on money, on top of money, on top of money. That's not there. So while you watch how this bill gets voted on, also watch how people act and what senators do. Because in the end, that's the real watching. You will never get a result watching actions on one bill. You may get temporary popularity, but you will not get a measure of that individual's integrity and truth to what they're attempting to do. So that's why I had these two hearings, and that's why I've made it clear, this is a process that takes work. And I do agree with many of you, I mean, for a large portion, because we've held the line now, we've positioned ourselves to be able to do this. Now it's the discipline and the hard work to be able to take it to the finish line. So that's what's going to happen as we go forward. But, you know, I just, I have to address those comments when they come forward on, you know, who owns what and why. Because it's just too easy. Whenever we get in front of people, a lot of times, we say, you're going to be fully funded if I get elected, or when I'm there, I'm going to do this. But there's no balance. They don't tell you where the money's going to come from. And that's why in this budget, again, I said in the miscellaneous provisions, and watch in August. I will not allow one penny to be appropriated that doesn't have I will not allow one penny to be appropriated that doesn't have a funding source. No phantom appropriations. Fiscal discipline starts with making sure that you control your house. You control what you got. And then, just like you and your businesses, like many of you talked about, the first thing you do when you address a problem is you address it head-on. What are my issues in front of me? And then you work your way forward. If you don't, you just ignore the problems and think they're going to go away, that's when you get in big trouble. So those are my closing comments as the chairman. Like I said, we're going to continue to do the work. And all the agents, all the, you know, all the oversight chairs have to do the work as well. Because they got the information now. I've disseminated it to them. And so all the action has to happen now with those who have the responsibility and the duty to get in there and do the work. So stay tuned, and yes, watch, watch, watch. Senator Gomatautau? Please close on Bill 11-38.
And I want to, I want to thank you, Mr. Chair, again for the time, and thank you for holding the public hearing on Bill 11-38. There were very, there was a lot of compelling stories today. And I hope that they made an impact on you, Mr. Chair, and our colleagues that remain here relative to this particular measure. I can tell you, they really did impact me personally. My challenge today to those that are up here today and not in attendance, or may have left the hearing since it started, and not a member of the Committee on Finance and Government Operations, I ask that you provide your input in the coming days, as outlined in our rules, back to this committee. Send an email to senator.duenias@guamlegislature.gov with your input and recommended changes to make Bill 11-38 better, as many of you have mentioned on the floor in the last two sessions with other policies we have addressed since January. Ideas to change any part of this bill in our process in the Guam Legislature. Your thoughts, that you are against it works too. Let our voters and citizens be alike, be the judge of the level of contribution that my colleagues, you can bring to a Bill 11-38. For the record, Senator Duenias and his committee is perhaps the busiest in our branch. So colleagues, take a moment, prioritize what this measure means for us all, and send your input to Senator Duenias. Thank you all in advance for the support of the markup process of Bill 11-38. That is our job, what we are elected to do here in the Guam Legislature. Now, I start with this, Mr. Chair, as I think that we, as policymakers, have such an important opportunity to take a bill that was passed seven years ago and make good on the promise then that it would be a temporary measure to take care of an emerging problem on the horizon in Washington, DC, and others issues facing Guam and Micronesia. To all of those that testified here, including the panel that's still with us today, and of course, those that were in the first half of the public hearing on June 9, 2025, I thank you all so very much. I thank you for your patience with your government. The wheels of policymaking work so very slow. It is my hope that we can get better, and we can get quicker with each day of the 38th Guam Legislature and those that are yet to come. Your concerns that were shared today, they're not lost on me. I live it with all of you. An election to public office does not mean that I do not see the BPT policy impacts, among others, every day. My wife is a head of a small business that was founded in 2012. It is a successful one that I had to step away from when I became senator-elect, and now you're Senator Gomatautau. That means I hear the impacts of public policy each and every day in her running of the business that we started together. My wife's engagement, I know she's watching this hearing right now, with her partners, her vendors, her customers, is such a grind, a similar grind that all of you on this panel that's out here behind them and watching at home, a similar grind that I know that all of you'd go through each and every darn day. Now, there are many companies that were not so fortunate over the last seven years. We heard from Monty today. Just visit the Tumon Sands Plaza. Visit the shell of what was once a thriving luxury retail facility, hollowed out by a serious lack of attention to get our tourism industry back on track post-pandemic. The World Health Organization officially declared the end of the COVID-19 pandemic as a global health emergency in May of 2023, two years ago. The Tumon Sands Plaza and many other establishments are closed in our main visitor district. Now, how about taking a stroll further north? Drive along Route 1, Marine Drive, and see all the empty commercial spaces from the nearby Micronesia Mall up to Our Lady of Lord's Church in Jigo. The empty feeling in your stomach from what you see has much to do, believe it or not, with a public policy that was meant to be temporary, which means for a short time. Now, an economic infusion to help these many businesses in northern Guam could have come much sooner. Central and southern Guam are not set apart from this. Hundreds more businesses no longer hold active business licenses. They are closed for good, and they were testified about it in the first public hearing on this measure. The 1% reduction in BPT will allow those businesses still in operation to reinvest, create jobs, train workers, upgrade equipment and facilities, improving goods and services. We heard it all in two public hearings. Now, these are real plans that are being discussed by business owners throughout our island. You heard it today. Putting these funds back into the private sector will have ripple effects that will benefit the wider community. It's an investment, not just in businesses, but in people. I'm not alone in saying this. AV, can you please show this slide if I could? Now, the slide you're about to see is a government of Guam document, Guam Water Works, to be exact. They presented this particular slide, among others, to Moody's back on June 13, 2025. This is part of GWA's effort to secure Series 2025A bonds. I think they were successful, if I didn't read that correctly. Now, they told the ratings agency in their executive summary that they, quote, "have addressed credit concerns, resulting in an enhanced credit profile reflecting its strengthened financial position." Close quote. This slide was just one part of their presentation, the economic update, to be exact. Now, I'm going to read the top for everybody that are here. Guam has significantly improved its finances by fully eliminating the general fund deficit without borrowing, and has grown the general fund balance to nearly $200 million. Again, I, many of you can't see it, but I can tell you what the second point says. For the record, it says this, quote, "Continuation of the 5% BPT and stronger-than-expected, sorry, stronger-than-forecasted income taxes contributed to higher-than-expected general fund revenues." Close quote. This report to Moody's shows a general fund balance in 2021, here on this slide, at $30.4 million. The general fund balance, okay, in 2022 is showing $135 million. Fiscal year 2023, the general fund balance at the far right, $195.2 million. When GWA says that they are in an investment, I cannot disagree. A rollback of the BPT from 5% down to 4% is an investment too. Again, not just in business, but in people. Thanks for sharing the slide there, AV. I can say that this public hearing is going to end soon, but the work on Bill 11-38 will continue. I ask for my colleagues' support, and appreciate the support seen today here. Many did not come, but they did provide input to the committee and to my office. We need to listen to our people and make good on a promise made seven years ago. I will vote yea to roll back the BPT and deliver the relief our island has waited way too long for. Thank you, Mr. Chair, for your leadership on this issue and your leadership in the committee, and I appreciate the time today. Thank you so much, Mr. Chair.
Sisus Massey, Senator Gomatautau, and to all my colleagues that have been here, and to all of you who've been patient to get your testimony in as well. This now concludes the public hearing on Bill Number 11-38COR. The committee will continue to accept written testimony within seven days from today, which may be addressed to myself, Senator Christopher M. Duenias, as chairman of the Committee on Finance and Government Operations, and mailed to my office at 259 Marter Street, Hagatnya, Guam 96910. You may also send your testimonies to senator.duenias@guamlegislature.gov. This afternoon, and now evening's public hearing is adjourned exactly at 6:00 PM. Sisus Massey, have a nice dinner.